Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our formal meeting for March. It is really delightful to see this room packed and to really see it packed with our teachers, our principals, and especially our students, that we are all here because they are our future. We have a very packed agenda tonight, and so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our student board member, Mr. Jalen Mitchell, to get us started.
All right. Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise facing the American flag behind me and remain standing for the presentation of colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, and the singing of the National Anthem by 5th grader Malik Sumler from Granby Elementary School where Ms. Kathleen Swain is the music teacher and Ms. Joanne O'Connor will be assisting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, all the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in the sky, proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You may be seated.
Malik, that was beautiful, and you have somebody special here with you tonight, is that correct? And can you introduce us to who that special person is? And now to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Dr. Gabriel, members of board, ladies and gentlemen. It's that time of the month again where we have an opportunity to showcase many of the great things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools. And tonight's superintendent's report will be a two-part. So we will start with our video, and then we'll have some recognitions, and I'll ask the board to join me down front so we can shake some hands with those recognitions. So I'll add appreciation to the Communications Department, Channel 47, and all who have supported the development of this month's video. If we can roll the video, please.
Booker T. Washington High School celebrated 102 years of teaching and learning with the unveiling of their own highway marker. Over 400 bookers from the past and present enjoyed performances by the school's drum line and alumni chorus, as well as breakfast prepared by Booker T.'s own culinary students. Several former graduates in attendance were also recognized for their contributions to the school's outstanding legacy.
It's like a blessing, first of all, to have lived that long. Secondly, to see so many people that you haven't seen in who knows how long. I got a classmate here that I haven't seen since 1960, so that's 59 years. So it's a reunion. It's a blessing.
It brings tears to my eyes. It's just so exciting to see everybody together, to see old students, to see faculty, to see old principals. I mean, it's just amazing. The school has got so much heritage and history, and, you know, we have this motto, "Once a Booker, always a Booker," and we still live that.
Members of Booker T. Washington High Schools NJROTC were fortunate to have the first African-American Navy SEAL and two current Navy SEALs visit their school during Black History Month. The active SEALs spoke about their experiences and how they took different paths to find success in the military. Retired Master Chief Bill Goins, who was also one of the very first Navy SEALs, talked about his journey and encouraged the cadets to not be afraid to set high goals for themselves.
I wanted to let them know exactly how I came along. And I came along in very turbulent times back in the '50s, you know? And I want them to know that they can advance, it's up to the individual. You know, I didn't feel that I was picked on because I was black or African-American or whatever, you know? I think I went right along with the rest of the group. I was one of 14 that made it through out of 97 Eagle. But we have, it's a good program, I believe.
I thought it was very inspirational and motivating because it lets me know that I can do anything, can take any route and still get where I want to be. You can do anything you put your mind to. It might take a little time, and you might have obstacles, but you're going to get there at the end of the day.
I took away that regardless of what people say to you, you can keep going, and anybody in this world today can get anywhere they want to be. It most definitely inspired me to apply to many naval scholarships and continue to go all four years into ROTC.
Black History Month was recognized throughout Norfolk Public Schools during the month of February in a variety of educational and creative ways. The Academy for Discovery at Lakewood displayed the True Sons of American Freedom Portrait exhibit in their foyer, so all students and visitors could view the life-size portraits of African-Americans who have fought for this country. Staff and students at Crossroads School created their own visual history display with a Black History Gallery Walk which could be seen throughout the school. Later, they hosted an evening program for parents on the Harlem Renaissance. Over at Larchmont Elementary, students performed a program for a packed house about civil rights activist Ruby Bridges. Ms. Bridges is best known for desegregating an elementary school in New Orleans when she was just six years old in 1960. In a very different but fun kind of performance, students at Norview Elementary displayed various types of musical culture during their lip sync showcase. And students at Granby Elementary marched inside their school in front of younger students during their Black History Parade, in which they carried posters featuring a variety of famous African-Americans. But some of the best representations of history came from the living museums that were brought to life by students at Soul's Point and Sherwood Forest Elementary Schools. Students at Soul's Point were given the option to focus on individuals from American or Black history as they described the life and accomplishments of various historic figures. At Sherwood Forest, younger students performed a Black History Month program while older students took on the personas of notable and historic members of the African-American community. So whether it was through art, music, or verbal performance, staff and students around the district learned more about a rich cultural heritage during Black History Month. As part of the Read Across America celebration, Norview Elementary kicked off the Norfolk Reads One Book Initiative, featuring the book Cleo Edison Oliver: Playground Millionaire. The event included performances by the school's cheerleaders and Norview Middle School's band, along with games and a special reading. Nearly 15,000 books will be distributed throughout the district to students in grades K through 5, thanks to donations from SunTrust Bank and the Life Enrichment Center.
Today, we are doing the One District, One Book kickoff, so we are participating K through 5 in reading a book across the board. So every child is expected to read a chapter at night with their parents, so we're really pushing the 14.2 independent reading.
It builds a sense of community around this one book. We can all read it together, have fun with it, have discussed the book together, learn about Cleo and what she does, and it brings that love of reading to our students. And that's what we want to do. We want our kids to like reading, to pick up any book that they want to read, and so this is just a fun way to do it and build community and family engagement with that.
Read Across America was further recognized across Norfolk Public Schools during early March as guest readers, including school board members, visited elementary schools to read to students. Other schools also celebrated reading through fun activities like this character parade over at Calcott Elementary. As a reward for winning this year's Read with MEAC contest, students at Larchmont Elementary celebrated with cheerleaders and mascots from several Mideastern Athletic Conference universities. The school received $2,000 for reading the most books, and Superintendent Dr. Melinda Boone was on hand to congratulate the students for being such outstanding readers. Norfolk Public Schools juniors and seniors got a taste of the historically Black college and university experience during the annual MEAC College Fair at the Norfolk Scope. All 12 universities in the MEAC, along with representatives from the U.S. Marines and Norfolk Police Department, talked with students about opportunities after graduation. Students learned about different majors and campus life and could even receive onsite admissions and scholarships.
I think it like opens it up for kids that probably wouldn't apply to college or don't really know that this stuff is offered. Like MEAC, including HBCUs, it really opens it up for like a diverse group of people to get into college, so yeah.
Um, I would say it's a nice experience to kind of, you know, get to know everything, the schools, and kind of have a better idea of where to go, or like maybe some people are stuck to certain schools that they want to, so if they come and then look at other ones, they get interested in other schools, that might be a better fit.
Approximately 130 students in grades 3 through 7 participated in the 15th Annual District Science Fair at Nauticus. Displays were set up throughout Nauticus, which made for easy viewing for parents, judges, and other visitors. Here's a list of this year's first-place winners. Congratulations. For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
So again, huge kudos and appreciation to our Communications Department and Channel 47 for putting together our monthly news bit here. The second part of the superintendent's report gives us an opportunity to celebrate another historic milestone in the life of Norfolk Public Schools. For the first time ever, and I don't see Coach Sutton Miller, I think I'm telling it right here, that's what he told me, we have two state championship basketball teams at the same time and in the same year. We, I told the truth, right, Mr. Sutton Miller?
Exactly.
Tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to recognize the Lady Titans of Lake Taylor High School. And the Commodores of Maury High School, who won their first championship since 1927. So what, I would ask the school board, I know we have tight quarters tonight, but if you can join me, right, join, we can go down front so we can congratulate, and I'm going to say a little bit more about some of the folks. So I saw Coach Sawyer was excited, and she was ready to come and shake hands. Back in the fall, Coach Sawyer and I were together, and she said to me, "I'm going to bring it home for you this time." Last year, we shared in the semifinals, the runner-up trophy, but she said, "I'm going to do it this year." And Coach Sawyer, all the coaches, and the Lady Titans brought it home this year. Think it's important to recognize that they have some first and second team All Tide Water players. Janaya Quinley is first team All Tide Water, Class 4 Region Player of the Year and Eastern District Player of the Year. We're going to meet her in just a minute. Second team Jasmine Doster and Shaniqua Gilliam. They're second team All Tide Water, so huge kudos. And so it gives me my, gives me great pleasure to be able to introduce to the school board and to this, all who are gathered in the city of Norfolk, the championship Lady Titans of Lake Taylor High School, where Mrs. Keisha Wade Jenkins is the very proud principal of that school. So we're going to ask Coach Sawyer, you going to lead the way? All right, Coach Sandra Sawyer. Jasmine Doster. Nope. Ashanti, okay. I'm just going to call names, and you all go around there. Shaniqua Gilliam, Asia Johnson, Chevelle Mason, good to see you, Jordan Foo, Janai Quinley, Desiree Short, Deja Somerville, and Tania Trotman, and all of the coaches. Coach McInnes, Coach Gilliam, Coach Hank Sawyer, Dominique Perry, and I'd ask Ms. Wade Jenkins to come right on down. Thank you for your leadership. And I had a chance at the MEAC College Fair to have a little more fun with the team, but what happened at the College Fair stayed at the College Fair, right, Lady Titans?
I've got the video.
Come on, Coach, work with me. Okay, Sutton Miller. I see smiling to my left the very proud principal of Maury High School, Karen Berg. As I indicated, the state championship had been elusive to Maury since 1927. And under the direction of head coach Brandon Plummer, assistant coaches Jadon Williams, Jayden Williams, and Shawn Jackson, they brought it home with Ms. Berg. So allow me to introduce Maury High School Commodores. Come on, coaches. Oh, look at that, here comes the trophy. All right, Chase Coleman, Bryce Phillips, Brian Phillips, Matthew Mensah, Desa, Desa Wright, Shawn Lewis, Clarence Rupert, Kashawn Tonsil, Corey Hollis, Chris Oog, Max Adele, Cory Jenkins, Carter Alexander, Marshall Gerloff, and here's Ms. Berg. Clarence Rupert, I understand, is All-State player. Congratulations, Clarence. And Brian is first team. And Brandon Plummer is Coach of the Year for the state. What can we say about that? Now, everybody who knows me always knows that I say, "When I grow up, I'm going to be tall." So right now, this is my aspiration. I'm standing here with them. We're so proud of all that you've done and how you've represented Norfolk Public Schools, just as the Lady Titans have, and we're looking forward to next year because you can't be one and done, okay? All right, thank you all. But before everybody moves, there's one other person I need to recognize and acknowledge tonight, and this is Mr. Steve Sutton Miller, who serves as the District Athletic Director, who makes sure that our students are well-trained, well-coached, well-supported, and represent their schools and the district well. So Coach Sutton Miller, we say thank you to you tonight, too. And to all the family members who are here, both teams, thank you for your support of your student athletes, because we, you make sure they study first and they enjoy athletics in a, as an accompaniment to their academics. And so we thank you because we know you all travel day and night following your students. You make sure they have what they need, where they need to be, and you're in the stands cheering with them. So all family members, since we're tight, just raise your hands and let us know that you're here. We appreciate all that you do also. So to Norfolk Public Schools and the city of Norfolk, our two championship basketball teams, congratulations. Madam Chair and Board, that concludes the superintendent's report, but we ask that you stay for the clerk's report.
School Library Month. School Library Month is an American Association of School Librarians' celebration of school librarians and their programs. Every April, school librarians encouraged, are encouraged to create activities to help their school and local communities celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in a student's educational career. I'd like to invite Dr. Michael Cataldo to come and receive the proclamation. National Student Leadership Week. Student leaders make significant contributions to the climate and culture of their schools and communities, and it's important to celebrate that. National Student Leadership Week is an annual theme-based week dedicated to recognizing and supporting the vital roles of student leaders. Join thousands of schools throughout the United States, Canada, and around the world to celebrate National Student Leadership Week, April 21st through 27th. The week is dedicated to recognizing and reinforcing the important role of student leaders. The theme for this year's event is "Student Leaders Taking Charge." I'd like to invite Jalen Mitchell to come and receive the proclamation.
Each year, we recognize dedicated volunteers and honor and highlight the powerful contributions that these parents and grandparents and community members make to our schools during Public School Volunteer Week. From donating time to assisting with classrooms and school activities, extending school resources, and providing a range of support, encouragement, and activities that might not otherwise be possible, these volunteers play an important role in our schools. When schools and families and volunteers work together to support learning, everyone benefits. This year's Public School Week is April 22nd through the 26th. I'd like to invite Dr. Khalil LaGrane to come and receive the proclamation.
Administrative Professional Week and Administrative Professionals Day. According to the International Association of Administrative Professionals, one of the original sponsors of the Administrative Professionals Day, there are more than 22 million admin professionals in the United States. Their roles are incredibly diverse, and often, these professionals go above and beyond their regular duties. This year, Administrative Professional Week will be celebrated April 22nd through the 29th, and Administrative Professional Day will be April 24th. I'd like to invite Ms. Chantel Williams to come and receive the proclamation.
Month of the Military Child 2019. April is designated as the Month of the Military Child, a time to honor the sacrifices made by families worldwide, with an emphasis on the experience of the dependent children of military members serving at home and overseas. During the month of April, Norfolk Public Schools will be celebrating the Month of the Military Child. Throughout the month, the school division will be recognizing military-connected students and their families for the tremendous sacrifices that they make for our country on a daily basis. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
On April 29th, there will be a district-wide celebration for the Month of the Military Child, and we will be blasting it out, so we hope to see you then also. Thank you.
Don't leave just yet. Don't leave just yet. Hold on. Ms. Roby, can you come up for a second? And Dr. Verhappen, can you please come to the podium? Can you tell us a little bit about this program at Granby Elementary and introduce the --
Sure.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I really want to bring attention to Mrs. Kathy Swaim, who is the elementary music teacher at Granby. She does the drum circle on her own time at 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, on her own time, with this very special group of young men who come to school early. And drum circle does a lot more than music. It builds fellowship and community, so this is a really far-reaching program. So maybe Ms. Verhappen would like to --
Mrs. Swaim is so talented, and so are our boys and girls, and she does this to build their confidence levels, to help them succeed, not only in music at school, but they're a family. They work so hard together, and they really enjoy their time with her. She feeds them breakfast. She goes and gets biscuits and brings them, and the kids come because they love to work with her and love to work with each other. It's a wonderful program. Wonderful program.
Are there any parents here of the students from Granby Elementary? Can you please stand?
No.
As the students transition out, if there is an ability to bring a few more folks in While we're waiting for our legislative update, we've worked with Advena Strategies to help be at the Virginia Assembly when we are here, working on behalf of the students in the School Division. They keep us informed on bills that are being passed and lobbied against, and if we need to come up to testify on certain items, then they give us the notification. We work very closely with them to put together a legislative agenda. We have Mr. Clanton and Ms. Martin, who organized a very successful legislative day for our legislators, where they came and toured our schools, they heard our legislative concerns, and it doesn't just end when the assembly is over. It continues all year, developing those relationships, because our state funding from our delegates and senators and governor is the major funding source of Norfolk Public Schools. And as we do consider the budget later on this evening, you will -- might hear many of us say to not just advocate locally, but also advocate at the state level, because those are where the big dollars are. So without further ado, let me welcome Mr. Jordan and Jonna Casabon from Advena Strategies. Thank you for being here tonight. Glad you made it in safely. And I'll turn -- actually, I'll turn the mic over to Dr. Boone. Okay, and I'll turn the floor over to them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got to be able to see. Yes, I'm not sure it's going -- oh, this goes higher. Awesome. Take it down when you talk. Okay. Thank you. Is that better? Okay. Want to start with the budget. Norfolk Public Schools actually did fairly well this year, I think, in the budget comparatively. Based on estimates provided by the staffs of the money committees after the conference committee was reported, we're looking at a net increase for NPS from the state of about $2 million. One of the things that I would point out to you is that the importance of ADM and the calculations of state school funding. ADM is the biggest -- is probably the biggest driver of funding. There's a comparable school division in the metropolitan Richmond area that had -- that's not quite as large as Norfolk. They actually realized a little over $200,000 net increase, and it was because of enrollment loss. They lost 800 kids. And so the importance of ADM can't be -- of keeping the kids in school, and it cannot be overemphasized in the state funding formula. So with that, the state provided additional money for a teacher salary increase. You may remember in the budget approved last year, funding was provided for a 3% increase for SOQ mandated personnel. And then this year, and that was to go into effect on July 1st of this year. The General Assembly included additional money for an additional 2% to go into effect on September 1st of this year. Now, and we've had this discussion before, as you know, the state only pays for the SOQ mandated personnel, and so the net cost to you for -- to provide that pay raise is likely to be far more than the amount of money you're getting from the state. So keep that in mind. There's some flexibility provided in how you provide the match required for that. It bifurcates the process, so the match you provide for the 2% has to be discreet from the match provided for the 2%. And if you provide -- if you're over-matching the first -- for the 3%, you can't count that towards the 2%. So there's some nuances there that Dr. Boone and her staff, I know, have drilled down into that you want to keep in mind as you go forward on the budget. The lottery funding is -- I think last time we talked, there was increased money in the lottery funding for -- to increase the amount that went directly back to school divisions under the per pupil lottery payment. It wasn't washed through the composite index. It went back based on enrollment. Now, due to additional lottery profits, that amount increases about $34 million. The House budget originally would have pushed the amount of lottery funds returned that way even further, but in the conference committee, it was dialed back just to the increase driven on the profits. There was additional money added for the at-risk add-on. It increases the percentage up to 16% in FY '20, which is a big benefit to NPS. The at-risk add-on is additional money for schools to deal with -- to help with at-risk -- the cost of at-risk kids. Now, the next item in our report deals with school counselors. The General Assembly passed legislation for the first time in many years that actually changed a standard of quality. Most of you know that the SOQs are actually written into the -- the Board of Education can adopt them, but they're not real until they're written into the Code of Virginia. The SOQs are embedded in the code. For the first time in many years, the General Assembly adopted a change to the SOQ. It dealt with school counselors, and they reduced the ratios for school counselors quite a bit. However, the budget does not fully fund that SOQ change. Now, the -- and so they override in the budget the statute that was passed. The implied intent is that -- remember, next year, you re-benchmark all of K-12 funding. For those of you who are new, every two years, the state goes back and recalculates the cost of what it's costing statewide to provide certain things, and the intent is to make an adjustment when the new budget -- when the governor proposes his new budget next year for the next biennium, to normalize that based on what the statute requires. So there should be additional money, a considerable amount of additional money for school counselors going forward. There's additional money in the approved budget for VPI-plus slots, which should help NPS a bit. Now, there was a -- the state had a federal grant of almost $10 million for preschool development that was expired, and the state picked up the cost of that. In addition, there was $3.1 million in the education budget for a bunch of nits and nats, as we refer to them. It's more zeros. The budgeting is about zeros in the state level. It's just more zeros. But there's $1 million for computer science training and professional development, quarter of a million for dual enrollment faculty credentialing, additional money for the -- to expand the teacher residency program, so much for a couple hundred thousand for robots for autism, a little bit more for Virtual Virginia, and some other items. There's also a half a million dollars in there for DOE to begin updating the Virginia Studies and the civics and economics SOL tests, those haven't been updated in a while, to align them with the history standards adopted by the State Board in 2015. There's also -- and this was a large -- a lot of topic of discussion this year, was seclusion and restraint. There's also almost half a million dollars in there for DOE to provide training and assistance to school in implementing the new board regulations, which are currently in the draft stage for use of seclusion and restraint. And then there's -- lastly, on the funding side, there's almost $6 million to implement the recommendations, or some of the recommendations, of the Select Committee on School Safety. $3 million additional for the School Resource Officer Program, $900,000 to provide school safety training to public schools, $700,000 to develop a case management tool for threat assessment teams and to expand threat assessment training, $428,000 to provide basic training to school resource officers, $400,000 to continue administration of the school climate survey, $300,000 to provide active shooter training in schools and communities. It's sad, but it's needed. An additional $6 million in bonds to help schools buy additional security equipment. And then the cap on the amount of grants that a division can get was raised from $100,000 for school safety equipment, school security equipment, to $250,000 each year. And so that's the budget side of it. If you've got questions, we'll take them as we go along. If not, we'll kick it over to Jonna, and she'll talk about some of the more substantive
No one has any questions about the budget right now?
Ms. Camson.
Just a quick question. The safety money that you were listing in the different categories, how is that distributed? Is there a grant involved where you can, you know, put in an application for a grant?
Sure. Some of it -- most of it went to the Department of Criminal Justice Services, which will arrange for -- like the training. They'll coordinate the training and spend that money. But for the school security equipment grants, those will be competitive grants that the division would need to apply for.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I'm going to just give you some highlights of bills that passed this year, first of all. Teacher licensure, I don't know if you recall, but last year, they're doing some things to combat the teacher shortage, and this is one of those things. They're trying to allow people who may not be great test takers to become teachers. So they're -- they have three different criteria for applying to become a teacher for the certification without actually having to take all the tests. So that's part of what they're doing with the teacher licensure. It's the Diversifying Teacher Work Act. The public school tobacco products and nicotine vapor products, they're not telling each school board what to do with that, but they are requiring that you have a -- develop a policy and let that be known. The school calendar, this is good news. After many years of trying to get them to budge on the school calendar, what they have required forever, that you -- that school starts after Labor Day unless you get a special waiver. This year, they negotiated, and we got them to take 14 days before Labor Day, so you guys can start as of July 1st, if you want to start.
No, not July 1st. As of July 1st.
As of July 1st. Yeah, you can't start on July 1st.
Have me go.
It starts on July 1st. That effective July 1st, you can start 14 days before Labor Day.
But you have to give an additional Friday holiday before Labor Day.
Before Labor Day.
And let me pause here and say, this was where a collection of the larger school divisions got together and worked proactively on this. Jonna took the lead on it, and we've been working on this issue during the summer and fall. And we had a group of, like I said, lobbyists like us representing the large divisions, along with VSBA and VAS. And we said, okay, let's have our own bill. And so instead of being reactive, we were on the front end of this, and it really played out well, because there was a -- when the bill was being heard in the Senate Education and Health Committee, the hospitality industry had popped out a substitute bill. We had seen it before, because we'd been trading it back and forth in negotiation, but we didn't know they were going to present it. And so fortuitously, something happened, they had to take a break. We had our own bill, so we laid our bill, and we gave our bill to a couple of friendly members of the committee, including Senator Lewis, and all of a sudden, our bill became part of that discussion. And that would not have happened if we hadn't been on the front end of that. So that was a big takeaway for us, and it's going to lead to some other things as we go forward this year.
Posting register of funds, this is where it's to make things public. What they would like to do is for every school division and local government to post every check they write on a website for -- so people can read it. It sounds wonderful, but as you guys know, it would be very time-consuming and cost money to get that done. So we shot that down again. We were happy to see that that bill failed.
But let me add, that's going to pass at some point. It's coming. It's a transparency issue, and the issue's primarily been technical and cost. There are a couple of school divisions that are doing it, and that's been cited. And it's not just school divisions, it also would apply to local governments. So as you move forward, you may want to keep in mind, the more you can work towards that, better to be on the front end of it than on the back end of it, yes.
And actually, VML and VACO also come up against that one, because they don't want the local governments to do it. So that helps the school divisions somewhat in lobbying against that. The School Safety Committee recommendations that Ron cited in the budget were things that passed. Some of the things that they wanted done did not pass, and they believe that they should keep the public out of the schools as much as possible and control them, control the people that come in. So election days, you know what it's like on a school day and an election day with the people coming in and out of the schools. So in order to tighten up that security, there were several bills introduced. One was to make Election Day a holiday, and you can see the others here. They all died. Eventually, they all died, but that's another thing that's probably going to come back. The School Safety Committee was a select committee, and they had a lot of power behind them. So they did get some things in the budget, but they didn't get a whole lot of funding and other changes done. The School Resource Officers, there were a couple different bills that people wanted to be able to -- and it sounds wonderful. to be able to, and it sounds wonderful, take a retired police officer and make them an SRO, but have them...
SSO.
Oh, sorry. And have them receive their entire retirement, in addition to getting paid by the school. But they came up against VRS, and it's so costly that it did not go anywhere.
The VRS estimated that it would add $20 million a year to the unfunded liability of the pension system. And part of that was driven by the fact that the window between the time an officer could retire from the police department and become a school security officer was pretty narrow. So they estimated, in their model, in modeling the cost, they estimated that a high number of police officers would see that as an incentive to retire, and in effect, triple-dip. And so that drove the cost up quite a bit.
Another bill that has been filed annually by a couple different legislators is nondiscrimination in public employment. And this one, there are nondiscrimination statutes, but this one is for sexual identity and gender orientation, or, sort of backwards. And those bills always pass the Senate, but then they fail in the House. So this year was the closest it ever came. So what we're thinking is that it's going to get better and better, and eventually it will pass. Okay. There were a couple standards of learning bills that two different legislators were promoting to mandate five SOLs in high school. And they went pretty far, but then, in the end, they were left in committee, so they failed.
There were a handful of things that, while maybe not major policy issues, will require you to do things, some of them you may already be doing, we wanted to highlight them. One was, will require that the board have an MOU with the police department regarding your SROs, that spells out the duties and responsibilities of both parties.
That's a memorandum of understanding, in case you don't know what a M O R.
The next one deals with teachers. There was a bill passed that would allow the state board, as well as local boards, to issue a written letter of reprimand for teachers. Right now, your options are pretty black and white, extreme. You're on one side or the other. And under certain circumstances, and the state board will be issuing some guidance, you will be allowed, as well as, and they can do the same, to issue a written letter of reprimand in lieu of termination. That's the only option you generally have right now. The next item deals with the school breakfast program and the national school lunch program. It will require you to put, place on your website, if you do not already do, the actual application, allow people to apply, as well as the eligibility requirements on the website. Yeah, there's a couple more. The next one deals with your emergency and crisis plans. Previously, when you developed your emergency crisis plans, you were simply required to provide copies to the police department, the fire department, EMTs. The statute was changed to require their involvement in the development of, in review of those plans now, including the Regional Emergency Response Council, which is essentially the ER, integrates the ER docs and the EMTs. Talked about that one. And the last one, Dr. Gabriel, deals with CBD oil and THCA. It allows, it allows it to be dispensed in the schools for children who have a valid prescription. But it does a couple of things. One, it provides immunity to the school nursing staff for administering those drugs. It also directs the state board of health regulatory, the state health regulatory boards to develop a certification form that the prescribing physician can use, should, will be required to use, to provide to the schools, certifying that he has authorized a prescription for this, that's been filled by an authorized dispensary, and that the child is authorized to take it along with dispensing instructions. That's it.
Anyone have any questions so far?
I don't have a question, Dr. Gabriel. I do have a comment. I know when they were referencing the items to be able to support teachers better, you may recall, recently Norfolk Public Schools received a $10,000 grant to support our teachers who have, may have provisional licenses and/or haven't fully completed the praxis. So that's, that's part of what we were doing. I would say, too, the before Labor Day opening of school is, I think we waited so long for that to happen, that we all kind of like, oh, it's here now. And so, we certainly, as a district leadership team, will be, begin looking at the options around that, as we, and come back to the board in the next school year to think about how and should we approach that. So those were a couple I wanted to make comments about.
Add on to what Dr. Boone said. At the Fall VAS Conference, and I've talked to Dr. Birdsong about this, we had, Dr. Boone was part of a group of the large school divisions, the superintendents of large school divisions, 30,000 and more, got together in a group. First time, Dr. Boone, I don't remember doing that as a group in forever. And this group is a breakout session. They went through the breakout session, through the break, and they found out their problems are, as large school divisions, are pretty unique to them in some ways. And so, out of that, is, I think there was a desire among the group to continue that discussion as we go forward, and Dr. Boone's going to be, is one of the movers in that. And also, that fed into our efforts on Labor Day bill, so that, let's get, let's take, let's get out in front of issues. And it's not necessarily money issues. One of the big issues for the large divisions is teachers, attracting and keeping qualified teachers. And how do we do that? And there may be other ways, other than send them to a five-year program at a school of education.
Can you talk about the evacuation?
Okay. Oh, yeah, one last thing. Remember, you had closed last year because the governor declared mandatory evacuations. The, Senator Cosgrove had a bill which passed, which will allow the state board to grant you a five, up to a five-day waiver when that occurs, and without any loss of funds because of...
Yes.
Not retroactive, not retroactive. But going forward.
Only when the governor declares a state of emergency, yes. Okay. The only other thing that we would like to say is, looking forward to the 2020 session, is, if you follow it in the newspapers, there are a lot of very veteran legislators that are retiring. Some of them are Senators Dick Black, Frank Wagner, and Bill Carrigo, and Delegate Riley Ingram, Dicky Bell, and David Toscano. And some of them were pretty highly ranked. And they are now facing, many, many people are facing primary challengers in addition to challengers from the other party. So our makeup of, I mean, every single seat is up for election in November, so the makeup of both bodies could change drastically. So we really can't, you know, prognosticate on that, as to, you know, what the outcome will be.
And not necessarily change in party, could just be philosophical temperament within each caucus. We're seeing probably a record number of nominee, I hesitate to say primaries, because you can't, the incumbent can no longer choose the method of election, of nomination, but nominating contests throughout the state on both sides of the aisle, from the left on the Democratic side, from the right on the Republican side.
I know that Ms. Basine had a question.
I'll defer to you to go first.
Well, I first wanted to also give kudos to Dr. Birdsong, because she was also the liaison with the board and Dr. Boone on our legislative efforts. So thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong, for all of your assistance, not only on the day that we brought them in, but continued throughout. She is on top of her emails.
Great.
She's great. My question really kind of pertains to the School Modernization Committee that we hosted here, and it was great, and I thank Dr. Boone and staff for opening up Booker T. Washington Morrie High School to allow Senator Stanley to come in and others, I think Senator Favola, several came in to see. So the question was posed at our town hall meeting yesterday, but where do we go from here to lobby on behalf of our division and other divisions on the growing needs of the capital maintenance, just standard maintenance that we have in our buildings? And then, for some of the much, much older buildings, where do we go from here as a local board in order to advocate and maybe come to a level where you are with the, with the school calendar, although that was kind of budget neutral, but where, what can we do now to get, keep this effort going?
Let me, there were two, there were five bills that were introduced out of the School Modernization Committee. Two of them passed. One dealt with, essentially established a rate subsidy program through the literary fund, but you have to meet, you have to have an LCI of a certain percentage that's designed to help the far less affluent school divisions. And they put a little bit of money in that, but not enough to move the needle. The second bill was called a school modernization bill. It's essentially a creative way to acquire and finance a new school facility using, making it what they call energy positive. You remember at the meeting at Booker T., the presentation about how this group was building schools in North Carolina and South Carolina, they're energy positive, and that, I mean, these were really tight buildings, covered with solar panels, had no, generated more electricity than the school could consume, and sold the excess electricity back to the utility. There was a bill that sets up a process for doing all of that. The key part there is the ability to sell back excess electricity to the utility. That's referred to as net metering. Very contentious issue in the General Assembly, and so in this bill, it's not called net metering, it's called energy positive. And there's a carve-out just for this program to allow it to sell back to the utilities. But that's all that came out of it. Now Senator Stanley made it really clear that he's not done. He was very frustrated that he didn't get more traction. Part of his challenge was, it was just his committee. It was the Senate Local Government Committee. He didn't have any of the appropriators from the House, and didn't have, I mean, from the Senate, and didn't have anyone at all from the House on it. So I would suggest to you that the place to begin the conversation is with our own delegation, and then we move forward with some of the other area delegates, including Delegate Jones in Suffolk, that you and I have talked about before, and build support that way. I know, I suspect I know how he's going to want to move forward on that. I think he recognizes the need, but his way of approaching it, maybe, it would certainly be different than Senator Stanley's.
Ms. Basine?
Well, we made a lot of progress this year. We have a long, long way to go, but I didn't want to close this out without recognizing all of the people that are in this crowd, who I know were up meeting with legislators, who are rallying, and we've got to keep that pressure on. And I want to thank you all for what you've done for the, for the teachers, for the staff, and for the students, and, you know, we're all in it together, and I hope we, next year, as you said, you know, keep it, keep it moving in the right direction.
And like family, we all pulled in the same direction when we were working on the outside. We might have our squabbles and differences inside, but when we got outside, we all pulled in the same direction. That was important. That's really important. Can't overestimate that.
Thank you very much for the update. We look forward to our next conversation. Onto item 5.07, citizen comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Just going to read through some of our protocols. When your name is called, please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or an organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting material to the clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, and I'll actually, you'll have the clock in front of you, and at the three-minute mark, you'll hear me hit the gavel. Please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Right now, we have about 25 speakers signed up, and so that is why I'm going to be pretty stringent on the gavel for the three-minute mark. And please understand, I'm not being rude, I'm just trying to be considerate of everybody's time. So I really appreciate this. Ms. Jackson, if you would be so kind to announce our speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have a total of 28 speakers. The first is Mr. Philip Hawkins Jr., followed by Ms. Whitney Davis.
School Board Chair, Dr. Noel Gabriel, Vice Chair, Carlos Clanton, members of the Norfolk School Board, Superintendent Dr. Boone, and the administrative team, and all of the guests here. My name is Philip Hawkins Jr., and I am the President of the Education Association of Norfolk, the EAN. I am also a pre-K4 early childhood elementary teacher at the PB Young Senior Elementary School, with 22 years of experience with Norfolk Public Schools, all here, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city. Tonight, we wear red for Ed for our students, red for Ed for our staff, and red for Ed for our schools. Please stand and be recognized, EAN members, and any others who have worn red tonight, but we know many of you have been wearing red for the last two years. Thank you. Tonight is a culmination of a two-year campaign that has swept across the Commonwealth, across this country, and now it is here in Norfolk. This campaign, Red for Ed, Fund Our Future, Virginia Educators United, and it will change this conversation we are having about public schools. Tonight, we wear red for Ed on behalf of the 28,000 students who attend Norfolk Public Schools, the EAN, the NFT, and the hard-working and dedicated employees of Norfolk Public Schools. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight, and we need, the time is now for us to fund our future. We can no longer wait, and we do recognize the constraints that we have at the state level, but it's now time for the local level to do its part right now. And so, here are our top four budget priorities for the EAN for the 2019-2020 school year. We support higher funding for compensation, higher funding for employee fringe benefits, higher funding for professional development, and higher funding for improved working conditions. What steps can be taken? NPS continued to move us to the Phase Three of the Compensation and Pay Study. Let's give our employees, all of our employees, two for two. Two for two represents, we need two more percent. We recognize you have put 3% in the budget for salary raises, but we need two more to make it a 5% across the board for all education professionals in the district, all employees full and part-time. Let's continue to work towards the step compressions that have hurt us over the past 12 years. We need two steps, not one step. We will never catch up if we don't double up or triple up at some point in the future. So let's get us on the right steps, so that we will not leave Norfolk to go to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach. The next item would be fringe benefits. We need to make sure that our employees do not recognize or are hurt by cost increases from our health insurance. We need to make sure that happens. Also, we need to make sure that we protect the funding for increased positions, reading specialists, math specialists, music specialist teachers. We've had these conversations, we need to restore those. We need to help provide support for those schools that have 60 to 80% of first-year teachers in those schools. It's not enough support. And we need more trauma-informed care support. You have my full comments. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you at the Norfolk City Council on April 10th.
I was wondering if I could switch with another speaker from my group. She hasn't, her name is Casey Reed, so I'll just take her.
I'm Casey Reed. I am a mother of two preschoolers, and I'm a foster parent of kids who either do or will go to Norfolk Public Schools. So my kids are five and three. My five-year-old is getting ready to start at Granby Elementary next year. And so I started looking into, you know, what the school day looks like, and I was frankly shocked to see the change in the amount of recess that kids get, especially compared to when I was in school. So I learned that it's about, it's 20 minutes a day, and I can't imagine having my kids all day long and only letting them get outside to play for 20 minutes a day. So I don't know how these amazing teachers do it, but I know when the baby gets fussy, or when my three-year-old's bouncing off the walls, or when my five-year-old's getting emotional, I take them outside, and it usually calms them down, and it usually works. And there's a scientific reason for that. When the kids get outside and they're able to have unstructured play outside, run around, there's parts of their brains that are being activated, there's endorphins that are being released. there's parts of their brains that are being activated, there's endorphins that are being released. It's priming them to be able to calm down and to focus. And it's not just that it's priming them to be able to go back into the classroom and to sit still and to be able to do well and listen, but they're actually learning through the unstructured play. That's how, that's how elementary school-age kids learn. And so by limiting the recess, it's not just that we're making it harder for the teachers while they're in the classroom, but we're actually, we're actually taking an opportunity for our kids to learn and, and keeping it from them. And so what we're asking for is 2020 by 2020. 20 minutes of unstructured recess in the morning, and then another 20 minutes in the afternoon. And there's other school districts that have done this and have seen, you know, dramatic increases in behavioral problems. And I have my card. If you're interested in learning more about some of those specific instances, I'd be happy to send it to you. And so it's a, you know, I guess I just, you know, I thank you for listening. This is my first meeting. I'm really encouraged to see the packed house. But you know, this is just a tiny, tiny fraction of the parents. So I appreciate you guys listening to us month after month. But I ask that maybe we could move beyond the listening. And recently, Virginia Beach sent home some surveys to the parents, get parental feedback for all the parents that are too busy and that aren't able to make it to school board meetings. So that might be something that we could consider doing. But this is something, adding 20 more minutes of recess, unstructured play a day, is something that we can do that would not add anymore. It doesn't cost any money, and it benefits all children regardless of, you know, what their life is like at home, regardless of how they're doing in the classrooms, regardless of what they're scoring on their tests. This is something that benefits all students across the board. And I might add that the teachers would probably appreciate 20 more minutes of fresh air each day, too. Thank you for your time.
Next, Sandra Shinnabarger and Katie Casabom.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, and Norfolk School Board members. Thanks for having me. I'm Sandra Shinnabarger, a member of both growing groups, More Recess for Norfolk and Virginia Beach. My ties to Norfolk include packing backpacks of food on occasion. For over seven years of feeding approximately 20 students at Bear Lawn Elementary, those students went hungry on the weekends, their parents were incompetent, not feeding them. So St. Timothy members decided to solve that problem, and they're still dedicated to feeding those students every weekend. Those parents are not here tonight. It would be, I imagine, very difficult to get them here. And I know it was also none of our business to feed them either, but I'm kind of here on those students' behalf as well. Sorry, I'm just out of breath. So anyway, I'm. Anyway, I also noticed that you all worked very hard on adjusting the high school start times. And the point with that is that I imagine a lot of research was involved, and maybe some not paying attention to the research at first. And anyway, I applaud you because Norfolk's ahead of Virginia Beach on, on that. And anyway, I imagine that the chapters and chapters of research were reviewed to make that decision. Another adjustment involving chapters of research is adding recess time, where, you know, at least, at least make efforts to enforce the wellness policy where, which is sort of new relative to decades of the way things have been done. But anyway, there's a positive behavior intervention support that's supposed to be replacing punishing students by removing recess. And in Virginia Beach, we've had school board members go to the different schools to help enforce that because it was not happening. Either teachers just weren't aware that they were supposed to be doing that, or. But anyway, I've heard many stories where that could really be enforced more in Norfolk as well. And also, I don't know if any upper admin are present, but I wanted to share that Virginia Beach upper admin, most of them have doctorate degrees. I imagine some of you do too, if you're here. But they've already, they've reviewed the research as well and taken it very seriously, as I shared with you here weeks ago. And then I also noticed quickly that your recent budget calls for a dozen more in-school suspension monitors. And to me, that automatically reminded me of a lot of articles about the pipeline to prison. And we don't wanna be starting that in elementary school. We don't want that at all, really. But I feel that instead of suspension monitors, or maybe you could have them double as, as a solution, to have them be recess monitors. Because that's another thing with, recess would need to be monitored well. So less problems, less, better social skills equals less problems with authorities, less jail. And I didn't get to read the last paragraph, but, can I finish, or?
Thank you, Ms. Shinnabarger.
My name is Katie Casabom, and I am a second grader at Souls Point, and I want more recess. Recession helps kids get out their energy and get out all their energy so they can be quiet and focused in class. When kids don't have time to play, they become chatty and get last-class work done. My favorite thing to do at recess is to run around and chase kids. I think running around in fresh air is healthy for kids. I want to be healthy and learn at school. Please give us more recess.
Ms. Bonnie Casabom, followed by John Williams.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Casabom, and I'm the parent of two children at Souls Point Elementary. And I'm here also to ask you to increase recess time for elementary school-aged children. This would be something that would not cost you any money, but would make a lot of parents very happy. The reason I sent my children to public school was to, instead of homeschooling them, was to give them socialization. I want my kids to learn how to get along with other kids, so when they're adults, they can get along with other adults. My kids get to school at 8:30 in the morning, and I pick them up at 3:20 in the afternoon. So during the almost seven hours that they're at school, they get 20 minutes of recess. So 20 minutes out of six hours and 50 minutes at school. Usually, they don't even get the full time because they count the time it takes to put on their jackets and get organized in that 20 minutes of time. These are little kids. They're five-year-olds, eight-year-olds, 10-year-olds. They should not be expected to sit all day with no time to play. When my daughter was in kindergarten, she had 50 minutes of scheduled writing time in her daily schedule, and only 20 minutes of recess. Recession allows children to play and think and move and socialize. These are the skills that I send my children to school for. Recession helps them develop social skills that they cannot get in the classroom during structured time. I hope that you will double recess time to 40 minutes. And until then, I hope you will reiterate to principals and teachers what your wellness policy is. That recess should never be withheld as a punishment to children. That recess should be free time where they get to make their own choices, and that recess should be outside as much as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and School Board members. My name is John Williams, a building supervisor for MPS Norfolk CSEP. I'm a proud parent, a grandparent of 29, which most has been, and is being educated in MPS. I come to you tonight as an employee, a parent, and a voter. As an employee, I want to thank Dr. Melinda Boone for her hard work and for all the great things she has accomplished since coming back to Norfolk as our superintendent. She has listened to the complaints of the custodial staff, teachers, and many others on mistreatment and abuse of authority, and acted swiftly to address and correct what was going on. Dr. Boone worked hard to bring raises and implement steps increased, which the district hasn't seen in many years. She should be allowed to stay and finish implementing her program, which the last couple of superintendents have not been allowed to do. We enjoy her leadership and thank her at the previous school board under the leadership of Rodney Jordan, within which I feel the previous school board members was going in the right direction and had the best interest of our children. As a parent, I come to you in disappointment for all the fighting and disrespect to the district that the new school board members has brought to MPS. Making MPS a talk of Hampton Roads, how can you, as leaders, teach our children the value of communication when you have clearly shown none, and it's just about yourself? We are constantly in the news with the in-house fighting, walkouts, and eye rollers that have been noticed at meetings with the, when the superintendent's speaking. You, the school board, was elected on your vision that you said you had for our children. But once elected, you had shown the opposite of your true intention, which was not the children. Mr. Clayton, when you was running for election to MPS School Board, you and I had a conversation at my house in which I asked you, what did you have to offer MPS? One of the things you stated was that you felt Dr. Boone was not doing her job, and that if you was elected, you were going to work hard on having her removed with some of the board members that you felt was not doing what they should be doing. I feel that is what is contributing to all the in-house fighting, making news on TV and newspaper. Now you wonder why parents is pulling their children out of the district at alarming rates, and our great staff is leaving for other school divisions. Now, as a voter, I want you to know that all the discord and public humiliation of MPS since the new board has been installed, in which we had never seen all this unrest before, we, the voters, would get out to make sure that we get the right people and don't have personal vendettas that really had the best interest of our children elected, because from what I see, you don't. Thank you, Dr. Boone. I appreciate you, and I'm more than sure that many others do. Well, everybody in the NFT stand up in my support.
Next, we have Jackie Glass, followed by Linda Stokes.
All right, I'm Jackie Glass. I am the parent of two citizens of Norfolk Public Schools. Less than a year ago, we gained a fully-elected school board. While I was not elected to serve, I was really excited about the process and what it meant for our city and what each of you were going to do for your constituents and our children. And since then, I've gotten a great amount of feedback from people in the community. And I've also been watching, as a voter, what's been happening. I've got a few concerns from some constituents of all of our, all of yours. I had a neighbor ask me, does that Campson woman wanna be superintendent or a school board member? Because I can't tell. I had a guy stalk me in Food Lion and ask me, how in the world did they let that Clinton guy vote on his own lawsuit? And why did that doctor change her vote? Tell me this doesn't sound crazy. As a community leader, I make it a point to listen more, talk less, and be attentive, especially when people are trusting me with their questions, comments, and concerns. When I'm confronted with comments like this, I try to ignore them and then put some positive insight on it and action item. But I can't ignore it anymore because you all giving the media an opportunity on great stories to disparage Norfolk Public Schools. We thought we were getting a concerned group of citizens, ready to represent our respective communities, ready to do what it takes to make strides for the future growth of Norfolk Public Schools. But what we've received is nothing short of what we in the military call a cluster, you know? One of the things, one of the things that the community wants is for every last one of you is to check your ego at the door, leave your personal and political agendas to your journals, and then just do the work. People in the community are trying to problem solve a problem that you guys are exacerbating. And that's the perception of Norfolk Public Schools. My heart breaks when I have people coming to me asking me, do you wanna start a homeschool network? I found some land. Maybe we could start a school. Or I'll make all the lunches. If you can just find me a good homeschool, I need to get my kids out of Norfolk Public Schools. These are people who cannot afford private school education's response to bad and ineffectual governance. The meetings that you have should not look like an episode of Survivor in which we, your constituents, can tell whom has alliances with whom and what rivals they're strategically trying to vote out. We will be, we want to be able to thank and support every one of you for your problem solving to the unique issues that we have with special education, with classroom support and literacy. The one thing that I have to thank this current board for is my community's loss of faith in an elected school board. So I'm urging you to simply just do better. Do the work with our children in mind. With, as a parent, I just want you to have a singular focus on the success of the school's district ride, understanding that creative and dynamic solutions are needed for each individual school. Meaning, what works at Ocean View might not work at Ocean Air. The bottom line is, we can't be and work towards an above-standard school system if we have substandard leadership in our, representing our communities. So I'm urging you guys to just do the work.
Good evening, everyone, Dr. Boone and the School Board. My first thought is on the budget item, because I came to you in September. Speaking of the problem that we have had at Little Creek with the buildings not being joined. And some young students asked me, why is it that the adults want to, don't want to let us have fun, have fun? And they said the adults themselves don't play. They work, they, they sleep, they clean, and they fuss. She said, they said to me that the fact that they couldn't go to the gym or go to the auditorium or go outside because of the fact that there is no connecting in the building during, and during inclement weather, they have to stay inside. So they spoke of how they couldn't have fun in the auditorium because they were getting yelled at for making the seat squeak and moving about. He said, but we want to enjoy the program too. So I'm hoping that in that budget that we have set up, that those two things are earmarked for the school, for my school, hopefully. The second thing I came to talk about was discipline. This year, I, I'm in school suspension, and it's a joke. We talk about we're using outdated teaching methods. We're also using outdated discipline methods, too. The, the first thing the kids say to me when they come to me, you can't touch me. That's what they say. You can't touch me. They have no fear of any kind of punishment and discipline. I hear them talking about, well, don't take away their recess. So what's left? What's left? What's left for us to do? I had one boy call me a liar, say that I was trying to get him in trouble and that I was lucky. I'm still trying to figure out the part about the lucky. Lucky what? Because he's a known fighter. He's been to me at least seven times. We have got to do something about the discipline in our schools. These kids are coming in, they have no disciplinary training, they have no moral training, they have very little respect for adults. If they're in a gang, is in the neighborhood, is in our school, because they're bringing it with them. And another kid, surprised, he said, I'll lie, cheat, whatever I wanna do to get what I want. So please, take another look at our discipline policy and see what we can come up with.
Cheryl Lacy, followed by Taisha McCoy.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, and members of the school board. My name is Cheryl Lacy, and I'm an MPS teacher. I'm here tonight in support of Dr. Boone and the exceptional job that she's done for MPS the past three years. Dr. Boone came to a broken school system that was seen negatively. that was seen negatively in the eyes of the employees, the community, and the news media. In three years, she has worked diligently to steer our system in the right direction. She's listened to teachers' issues and has been transparent with what she can change and what change she can work on for our future. She cares deeply about her babies, and so do I. For many years, many of us have advocated for a fully elected school board. And now that we have our first one, we see its problems. If one's reason for running was to promote their own agenda, there's a problem. If we change the majority so one side always wins, there's a problem. If we do things against board protocol, there's a problem. If we have private meetings and private deals, there's a problem. The school board policies and procedures states that the board needs to look at its own actions as well as the efforts and accomplishments of the superintendent and the school staff. The school board must work towards maintaining an awareness of the feelings of the teachers, pupils, and the community. If I were to assign a grade according to this rubric, it wouldn't be a passing one. The board's behavior has impacted morale among staff and the community. The Code of Virginia defines bullying as a real or perceived power imbalance between the aggressor or aggressors and victim and is repeated over time. This is what we're seeing. I urge our board to have the confidence in Dr. Boone that our teachers have and the courage to change what must be changed. Thank you.
Greetings and good evenings, school board members, superintendent, students, staff, and guests. My name is Taisha McCoy. I have served Norfolk Public Schools for a little over 18 years. I currently work at Lake Taylor High School, home of the mighty champion Titans, and I am the office manager there. And we'll talk about changing that title at a sooner and later date. The last time I was before you, I discussed that the employees and staff of MPS are not just dollar signs and percentages, but we are the heartbeat of this district. I believe that Dr. Boone recognizes and that has accelerated student achievement and closing the achievement gaps for students require the capacity and commitment of the school district and the community. Dr. Boone has redesigned the organizational structure of the school district to align district departments and systems with school improvement. Four key divisions supported this work. Finance and operations, teaching, learning, and student support, research and accountability, and human resources. The functions of each division provides leadership across the system to generate improved student results. Last year's school budget and division priorities were, one, to ensure full accreditation; two, increase academic achievement of all students; raise floor and ceiling simultaneously to close achievement gaps; three, improve climate, safety, and attendance; four, become school board of distinction; five, promote Norfolk Public Schools to reflect outstanding accomplishments of staff, teachers, and students; six, develop and coordinate a capital improvement plan for facility and technology to enhance teaching and learning; and last, attract, retain, and help to develop strong academic families and high qualified teachers and staff. In order for each of these priorities to be fulfilled, this board will need to, will need to have full support of the staff and employees of Norfolk Public Schools. Before a student can ever step foot in a school, classroom, lunchroom, or bus, it takes the operations and support of the staff that is behind the scenes. School maintenance, security, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria managers, principals, office managers, student data specialists, school counselors, teachers, teachers assistants, parent liaisons, attendant techs, and the list goes on before a student is ever mentioned. No school can stand or operate without these persons and positions in place. But yet, as student enrollment declines and the terminating of positions that once took six to now to two or one to do the slack of the work that is pushed on to the support staff with less pay and funding for operations and the beautification of schools or after-school programs, leaving most or all of us overworked and underpaid. These are the situations we should be fighting for, not each other. The same holds true for the school board, superintendent, administration. One cannot exist without the one working with the other. In order for our mission and vision to be carried out, both will need to work together if we are all on the same page and we can do this mission and satisfy the agenda together. Thank you.
Dr. Vivian Hester, followed by Ms. Lula Sears Rogers.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and members of the school board. I'm Vivian Hester. I am the president of Concerned Citizens of Bogota T. Washington High School. And at this time, I'd like to have the members of the Concerned Citizens to stand. On February 23rd, 2019, the mayor and members of this board were present at the unveiling of the state highway marker for Bogota T. Washington's 102nd birthday. This is two, 102 years of educating students for Norfolk Public Schools. Dr. Boone, we are sorry that you were unable to be there, but we did feel your presence. We were graced with more than 1,700 attendees, alumni, friends, the PTA. It was a wonderful event. On behalf of the Concerned Citizens, the PTA, and the foundation, I would like to thank the board members who were able to attend and for your encouragement. I would also like to thank you for the 100, $1,1500 scholarship that one of the students at Bogota T. Washington will receive this year in remembrance of the 102-year celebration. Students from the culinary department, the band, graphic arts, cheerleaders, ROTC, and participated in the celebration. We are still getting calls from the community supporters at thanking us for remembering Bogota T. Washington High School. Every news station in the area and the Journal and Guide covered this event. Unfortunately, the Virginia Pilot chose not to. But we are, we understand. We are excited about the future of Bogota T. Washington High School and look forward to the day when we can sit down with you all and come up with strategies for a new Bogota T. Washington focus, STEAM or CTE. Thank you so very much for your support and continue to call upon us if you are in need. Thank you.
Good evening to you all, school board members. My name is Lula Sears Rogers. I'm a member of the Concerned Citizens Bogota T. Washington High School and a 1959 graduate of that school. 1959. I too am here to thank all of you who came out on such a rainy Saturday to join more than 1,800 alumni, friends, and supporters who were there to share in the unveiling of the handsome historic marker located on Virginia Beach Boulevard's side of the school. We could not have done this without your support. I had the opportunity to serve as the mistress of ceremony of this outstanding event, so I was able to look down in all of the faces and you were smiling at me and I knew you, I knew you were supporting me. It was a big crowd. In the state of Virginia now, we have two highly celebrated black high schools left. I tell you that every time I come here. They have stood the test of time during the era of massive resistance, the great IC Norcom Portsmouth and Bogota T. Washington High School. Thank you for all your help. Thank you for the scholarship. Whatever you did to support us, we are so grateful. Thank you to the city council who allowed us to have an evening celebration in the lovely Half Moon Facility. And we got down there and had a great time. To the TV stations that everybody, 3, 10, 13, 47, as Vivian has said, the new Journal and Guide, we just say thank you. Yes, we were saddened that the Virginia Pilot and the Education Director did not cover us, but we press on. We ask that you will please remember us. We are waiting to hear more about the CTA program, CTE, I'm sorry, and when will it begin and what are the goals and objectives? We need to know and the parents need to know as well. We thank you for everything that you have done. I'd like to share with us in this last minute the litany that we had on that day. Today, February 23rd, 2019, we joined together to celebrate the unveiling of the historic highway marker in honor of Bogota T. Washington High School, Norfolk, Virginia. We remember with great respect and appreciation, Mr. Booker Taliaferro Washington, a great man, a great educator, a great statement. We are thankful for the administrators, faculty, staff, parents, and past and present who have made a way out of no way to help us receive the best education possible at that school. We know that our people without knowledge of their own history is like a tree without roots. We dedicate this marker for past, present, and future generations. Today, we are the mighty Bookers. We are marching on to victory. And this legacy will continue to live on for generations to come. Bogota T. Washington High School, 102 years and counting. The legacy will continue forever and ever. Thank you so very much for your time.
Cecil Myrick, followed by Patricia Rubin.
Good evening, everyone, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. My name is Cecil Myrick. I am a citizen of the city of Norfolk. I'm a graduate of Bogota T. Washington High School, class of 1961. And I am a proud member of the Concerned Citizens of Bogota T. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all your help and contributions that you made toward making our celebration a victorious affair. But now I'm playing the devil's advocate. A couple of years back, we had a moldy mildew problem in Bogota T. We still don't know today if the air is even generated. It's being generated, it's fit to breathe because we never saw a report from anyone saying that it was cleared of the moldy mildew. Number two, our team Bogota T. should have been standing here with Maureen Lake Taylor this evening. But unfortunately, our children don't have the supplies that they need. So therefore, they don't have the places to practice. The gym is falling apart. They don't have the playing fields for baseball. They have to go to other places to play home games. The tennis courts are in disrepair still. And so like I said, Bogota T. is still lacking in a lot of things that other kids evidently seem to have full control of, other schools have at this time. So I'm still here to just plead another case for Bogota T. We still need things there. We still call the school of the arts. You hired a dance teacher and I think a theater teacher last September. No place to perform, nothing to do because they don't have the help that they need for theatrics, makeup, cameras, costumes, things that it takes to put on performances and whatever. So Bogota T. is still not the school of the arts. They don't have the cameras that they need for kids in the communications area that want to move forward in that area and technology. They don't have the things that they need. So I'm still here, like, we're still behind everybody else in the city, obviously, because their teams are rolling on to victory and I was still standing still. So on the behalf of the students and the teachers at Bogota T., I hope something will be done. You talk about the CTE school. So we know that won't be tomorrow or next week. And in the meantime, we have kids in this school. The roads are declining because we don't have anything to offer the kids that want to come to the school. And it's a shame because in 2019, it reminds me of 1959 and 58 when I was at Bogota T., we had nothing. We got secondhand usage of everything. But at least we had something because we had great teams. We had great teachers. And we had strong, strong school spirit because we were very well-educated kids from elementary school straight through high school. We had teachers that taught us to read. So therefore, we had a hunger for a good future. We had teachers that had vested interests in our futures. And they were not easy on us. They were not lenient. And they made sure that when we walked down that aisle on graduation day, we had what we need to go into college or to get our future started. Again, I applaud you. Please don't forget us and leave us in the background again. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, school board members. My name is Patricia Rubin. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Little Creek Elementary School. The first point I'd like to make is just to express my support and thanks to Dr. Boone for trying to get MPS back on track with step increases. I found a pay stub of mine from 2009. My gross monthly pay has increased by a total of $636 in 10 years. That's not annually, but over the span of 10 years. So we need to do better. I have a master's plus 30 and that figure includes the plus 30. My second point is the unflattering articles about school board members who appear to place ego over helping MPS achieve greater success were recently published. There are some good things happening in MPS, but there are certainly some concerns that need to be addressed. If you walk out of meetings that are meant to allow mature professionals to discuss and work through problems and take away mics of those who remain, how can we get to the business of improving retention and recruitment of highly qualified personnel at every level or address facilities and other issues? The articles are an embarrassment and we expect better from our elected school board members. Thank you.
David Brenner, followed by Donovan Davis.
Good first day of spring and evening to Norfolk Public School Chairwoman, Vice Chair, fellow school board members, Superintendent Boone, Team MPS, and fellow attendees. My name is David Brenner. I'm a longtime resident of Norfolk, a follow product of MPS and a activist in the community engagement for the military and use of all of Norfolk and beyond. I'm here today in support of a student of MPS Schools and a rising senior that will graduate from Norview High School this year. With my past experience with military and other life experiences, I come today as in the military to stand tall for my fellow brother. To end this, I come as support and to be here for this young man, to be on the front lines with him. I feel that the universe is the limits with him and I am honored to know and bring to the podium Donovan Davis. Sorry about my throat.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Boone and Dr. Gabriel. I'm a student at Madison Alternative School since last year, May. The reason I've come today is to express my desires to attend prom at my home school. I understand that my actions in the past have revoked my privileges that I would have received at my home school. However, I have been nothing but repentant since I've been suspended to Madison. Because of good behavior, Norview High School has allowed me to walk with my classmates for my diploma. While I, while I appreciate them for allowing me to join my peers after my past mistakes, I would allow the, I mean, I would love the opportunity to enjoy a prom night with my friends. As a punishment, missing the entire year, I understand. But to miss one night that I'll never get back is tragic to say the least. But I'm not here to make any excuses for my actions. I'm here just to show you who I am today. A boy that's about to be a man out of high school. And prom is a night that I look forward to since I've been in middle school and be tragic if I'm not able to go. And I met a, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. I met a special person that's held me accountable for my academics and I would love, I would love to show my gratitude to her by telling her that I'd be able to take her to prom. But I just want to thank the school board members for allowing me to come up here and speak on behalf of my situation. I also want to thank my English teacher, Mr. Worthy, for coming here today to support me through this because it's kind of hard speaking in front of a lot of people. And I also want to thank Mr. Brenner because without him, I wouldn't have the courage to come and talk to Norfolk Public School Board about my situation. to come and talk to Norfolk Public School Board about my situation. Thank you. Y'all have a nice night.
Barrett Hicks, followed by Donetta Russell.
Good evening, board, Dr. Gabriel, Superintendent. I'm Barrett Hicks. I am the Executive Director of the Concerned Citizens Association, Tywhorter Connection. We work with youth and communities throughout. I have been taking care of family members for the last several years and haven't been before you, but I've watched you over the TV and whatnot. I want to actually say congratulations also to those Lake Taylor Titans and those Maury Commodores. I am a former Lake Taylor Titan, all Tywhorter participant as well, captain of football, basketball, track teams. Let's just talk about Barrett tonight. I come, I come here tonight primarily from family and friends looking at the situations that seem to be taking place in Norfolk Public Schools, and primarily at that Southside STEM Academy. I've seen, you guys speak of it on television. That's a travesty. And I've heard people say, you know, we, I didn't know anything about it, or we did make a mistake. Yes, major mistake when it came, comes to that particular school. But we went to all of these meetings over the years and whatnot to make sure when Capistella or Southside STEM Academy came on board that they would be proper. I personally met with Mr. Smigle to understand what he did over with his school, and we brought that back to our leadership team, and we put it forward. I'm shocked as to why it wasn't implemented. I mean, we talk about funding coming down, and then it not get to where it needs to go. You can build buildings all day long, or you could talk about destroying them or closing them down, but when you build it, you have to bring the resources. That's not happening. And I asked this board to take another look at it, because again, Capistella or Southside STEM Academy should not be one that we ought to think about, should we be taking care of it? It should be the priority, because it's been the one that's been out there the longest. We fought for the school. We made a name change and all that good stuff. But the resources and that dynamic of teacher mix needs to change. We talk about leadership. And again, we talk, I'm going to talk about Barrett a little bit again. I'm a former Air Force. I'm a retired Air Force. I know leadership, and you guys know it because you've been elected to be put in this position. It's time to do the work. My family members are doing much better, and they've told me, Barrett, it's time for you to go back to work. Oh, boy. I'm coming.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Boone, how you doing, sweetie? I can call her sweetie because we have, I have been in her company. And it's something when you being people company, and they are friendly, and they are school board members. And that's what she is. When I'm around her and Mr. John, they're friendly. I like to be around friendly people, because I'm a friendly person. I am a product of Norfolk Public Schools. I have worked for Norfolk Public Schools for over 23 years, and I am also a proud member of NFT. I am up here tonight because I have watched things change in this district over many years, and I watch the way our children are losing support and resources they need to succeed in school. I would like a school board that is united. You understand that? I have friends in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake schools, and they say, what is y'all doing here? Then y'all got a young man to speak. They say a little child will lead you, but he's not a little child. But what he said, and the news people printed and put it on the TV, that y'all shouldn't be arguing. And when our kids look at that, it's sad. Now, how can y'all tell them have discipline in the school when y'all argue? Keep it in the inside. Don't do it in front of people. That's what my mama said. What stays in the house, stays in the house. But then nobody see it. Then nobody see the marks that she beat when she beat me. And you know, I'm still here. You know, I told my brother, he better not, never order a Hot Wheel track for another Christmas, because that yellow Hot Wheel track is up and down. But what stays in the house, stays in the house, but we shouldn't see, we shouldn't see that. The news shouldn't see that. Y'all understand? We got to work together. I like Dr. Boone. I like, I can't read this paper, because I got to speak from my heart. I like Dr. Boone. I like Mr. John. I heard it through the grapevine that they trying to get rid of her. I said, not so. She's a woman like I am. Don't let me get a macho and get all the women in Norfolk to come up here and prove to y'all. We, we want this woman. She's done great things. Her mentor program, I encourage the teachers, the young teachers that's coming in first time, go to that mentor. Dr. Boone wants y'all in there. Y'all go. Some of them didn't want to go. I said, go. It's a good thing. But my thing is this, that's staying together. That show our students, that show this public, that we are standing behind our superintendent. We don't need another one. We done got rid of some. So we need to keep this one and show that we got it together. Is that right, school board? School board? I'm a cheerleader, so get used to it. You gonna see me again.
Vicki Greco, followed by Mary Ann White.
Good evening, all. My name is Vicki Manugo-Greco. I'm here again before our school board tonight as a very grateful graduate of Lake Taylor's class of 85, as the even more grateful mom of three future NPS graduates, as a former NPS special educator, moreover, as a frequent witness in Citizen Row, where I and countless others in our community watch and hold you all accountable as you share the collective responsibility, demanding work, and telling commitment to strategically promote our public schools as the foundation of our community's well-being, as you submit the proposed operating budget request to our city council on April 1st, as you work to empower and welcome true partnerships with families, businesses, and communities at a time that our schools desperately need good stewardship and equitable leveraging of financial and human resources, as you relentlessly pursue authentic learning and instruction based on high expectations, as our administration and staff work together to regain educator positions, teach each our kids, and coach and support our teachers, as you work to host school settings where all those within feel safe, secure, and more importantly, that they belong and are valued, all the while nurturing our school culture and habits of excellence, equity, and justice, while the efforts of our students, teachers, and staff show continuous improvement. And what drives all this work is what actually is what's best for and the sake of our children, who not only learn in our classrooms and learning labs, performance stages and creative art studios, athletic playing fields and playgrounds, but all of our children who dream dreams of realizing opportunity pathways that we, the adults, who are fortunate to teach, parent, and lead them, can and must open up for them. And because of her relentless commitment to our and her babies, I share my deep appreciation and respectful support of our highly resilient Superintendent Dr. Melinda Boone and all the educators led by her to work on behalf of our kids, their dreams to be realized, and our city's shared future. I thank the school board members who know to guide, operate, and lead with the higher standards of ethics, justice, and integrity that we citizens set for our public officials. Because not only is it the role you chose for yourselves, these traits are the reasons for trust you have and still work to earn and deserve from us when your public give you this powerful and serious responsibility of leadership, not to self-promote or fundraise for the next election, but to do your job. I will finish and ask my fellow advocates to remember our jobs as citizen bosses, that they don't end when we cast our ballots, when our schoolchildren become young adults, when the school board's budget request goes to our city council members and city managers for consideration for final funding. We citizen bosses must press on to advocate for fully funded schools at our local and state levels. When we invest in our schools and children, Norfolk gains. See you at the city council hearing Wednesday, April 10th.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann White, a teacher at Granby High School and a member of the EAN. Dear school board members, Dr. Boone, and distinguished guests, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you today. I'd like for you to expand funding for teachers and ESPs. We need more than a 3% raise to attract and retain outstanding teachers and staff. I would like to see a 5% raise of all teachers and staff members. We need to add teaching assistants so that we have an assistant for every first grade and every kindergarten class. Want to thank you for your support for Granby High School senior Miriam Butts, who proposed replacing Styrofoam serving plates with reusable trays. Thank you. Child Nutrition is rolling out reusable trays starting April 11th, and it's in great part thanks to your work. I want to ask NPS to add a class on solar panel installation, and I want to see NPS add solar panels to two schools per year in the upcoming years. Norfolk and NPS need to be part of the solution to eliminate the climate change that is raising the waters in our streets. In order to prepare for our children's future, we need to work with Partnerships for Change on educational issues, social justice issues, and environmental issues. Our students need stability in all these areas to be able to focus on reaching their full potential. Thank you very much.
Mia Holmes and Ellen Fithson-Rider.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and school board members. I am Mia Holmes, and I'm a product of Norfolk Public Schools, graduate of Norview High School, 1985. I'm a community advocate and also a member of Norfolk Public Schools Educational Planning Steering Committee. My comments tonight are on continuity. Change often comes slowly in public schools, and implementation is hard work. However, no one can implement, implement anything with constant turmoil. It would be impossible to have a conversation about continuity and Norfolk Public Schools' issues without discussing this current school board. The current dynamics on this board is definitely a recipe called dysfunction. The citizens of Norfolk who elected you need some equilibrium to exist so this board can focus on high-level policies and goals, such as all staffing receiving step adjustments that employees waited nearly 10 years, but thanks to Dr. Boone, she got it moving. The board also needs to realize that each school within Norfolk Public Schools is different, but recognize their strengths. Work with Dr. Boone to uplift our schools and replicate success as appropriate. Do not model one instance of success and try to apply it to all. Constant change has harmed our division. No other district in Hampton Roads is shared in a negative light unlike Norfolk Public Schools. Let's stop having unpleasant articles written. Stability matters not only to the city of Norfolk, but to the 33,000 students and 2,000-plus staff that enter Norfolk Public Schools daily. More to come.
Hello, my name is Ellen Fithson-Rider. I am a parent of a middle schooler at Blair Middle School who is, receives special education services, and I'm here to talk about special education graduation rates. National average is 69%. The Virginia goal is 52%. Norfolk succeeds in graduating less than 35% of their students from special education. The National Center for Education Statistics say that there's three ways for a child not to graduate from special ed. It's to drop out, to die, or to attain an alternative diploma, such as the Applied Studies Diploma. Now I'm going to talk about VAP. So the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program is when you take a child off of the SOL track and onto the alternative track. There's a criteria worksheet that is in that packet. This is probably the shortest form I saw in my four years of fighting for my daughter with her special education rights. The largest font and the shortest form with the most white space, and it says, "A responsive note to any question indicates the student is not eligible for VAP." And question two is, does the student demonstrate significant cognitive disabilities? The guidelines for VAP on page one say that the students under IDEA significant cognitive disabilities constitutes less than 1% of the student population. But the VDOE recognizes that across Virginia, there are students who are on VAP who do not qualify to be on VAP. What happens when you are on Applied Studies Diploma? You do not, Diploma is in name only. It is not federally recognized, and the children who are on the VAP track, they do not get a recognized high school diploma. And what are their chances of success in life after that? Now, my daughter was encouraged, it was presented VAP as a benefit to me when she was in third and fourth grade, that, oh, you don't have to worry about SOLs. You know what they didn't have, they didn't have to worry about trying to help her attain SOLs. Thank you very much. And I know this, I sat down at the SEAC meeting, my first one, the parent across the table, she said, oh my God, they're doing that to my nine-year-old boy with autism. They tried to get me to switch him also. So I, this part is the call to immediate action. I ran out of toner, so you're going to have to remember this, is there are children on VAP in Norfolk Public Schools that should not be there. They need to be immediately, everyone reviewed, and if they don't deserve, if they're not eligible to be there or qualified to be there by being significantly cognitively disabled, you need to look at their IEPs. They need to be taken off. They may have been there for three or four years, and they've been languishing in non-grade level tracks for all of that time. So there are kids in elementary school at Young, I got right off of my, my agenda here, but you guys need to immediately look at all the kids who are on VAP, see who shouldn't be there, and you need to get all, get them off of that, if that's appropriate. And that's going to be work, and you can't wait on that, because this has been going on, and all of those children are languishing, their parents are misinformed, they're not told at elementary level that this is going to do it to their academic career. Thank you.
Cheryl Jordan, followed by Carter Smith.
Greetings, Dr. Boone, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, and all gathered here. My name is Cheryl Jordan, and I'm the principal of Sherwood Forest Elementary, where I proudly serve some of the best students, parents, staff, and teachers in the nation. I also serve as the state rep for the National Association of Elementary School Principals. I came back today from Capitol Hill, where I served as an advocate for education, and thought it best to do so here at home. I'm not speaking on behalf of elementary principals, rather, I felt compelled to speak after some administrators in DC asked me what's going on in Norfolk. I want to thank Dr. Boone for her leadership since 2015 and continuing the practice of meeting with principals through our local principals organization. As a national state rep, I can tell you that is not happening everywhere. The last three years of my 23 career, all in Norfolk Public Schools, have been the absolute best. I've been fully supported by my boss, Dr. Gray, and members of the leadership team. Leadership members are putting much-needed systems in place for systemic change that won't happen overnight. However, I believe we're headed in the right direction. I have watched the school board meetings, and I can honestly say they've brought me to tears. We are so much better as a division than what we are portraying. I read the last two articles in the local newspaper, one about our school board and the other about high-performance schools, and I'm saddened. I happen to know and respect several of the school board members and have worked closely with you as colleagues. I know the passion you have for education, but somewhere along the way, there's a disconnect. In reference to the article about high-performance schools, I applaud my hard-working colleagues of those schools who are also friends. The principals of Norfolk have a bond like none other. The principals of Norfolk have a bond like none other. I also, however, want to speak on behalf of those principals working in schools on the other side of the city who have made tremendous growth. I implore you not to forget them. Don't forget those teachers, parents, staff members, students, and principals. Because the state now focuses on the growth model, I encourage you to do the same. Our theory of action focuses on every child, every day. Let us do likewise. Please let us all get back to the business of children, all children in Norfolk Public Schools. We are definitely stronger together. The world is watching us. How will we respond? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Chairwoman Gabriel, and Vice Chair Clanton, and members of the school board. My name is Carter Smith. I'm the proud parent of three NPS students, and I'm here tonight for two reasons. First, I would like to commend the board for passing an accountability plan that actually has measurable results. Thank you for not dragging out this decision any longer. This plan may not be perfect, but it's a great start toward district-wide accountability and transparency. Your plan puts academic outcomes for students front and center. Just as our school principals and our classroom teachers are held accountable by downtown administrators year in and year out, this measurable plan will provide much-needed accountability for the leadership of NPS, which, when considering the decline in citywide reading and math SOL raw scores last year, has been lacking. I would love to see your critics speak as forcefully tonight about this drop in student outcomes as they are about board cooperation. Second, I would like to encourage the board and the superintendent to take another look at the budget of the central administration department. From fiscal year 2016 to the currently proposed budget, the central admin budget has grown by $2 million, which is a 23% increase in this very downtown office tower, even while average daily membership has declined by over 2,500 students, an 8% decline. To reiterate, at the same time, NPS student population has declined 8%, the central admin budget has increased 23%. By way of comparison, the classroom instruction budget across all of NPS has increased only 4%. These budget numbers are difficult for a parent like me or any stakeholder to reconcile. Let's look at a smaller example. The 2016 out-of-town travel budget for central administrators was less than $60,000. Next school year, it will be more than $120,000, a 100% increase. I'm not sure where our administrators are traveling, but I'm certain that I'd rather have an additional reading specialist at just one NPS school than have Norfolk pay for additional travel for its central admin staff. And imagine, just imagine what NPS could do with the 30 additional math and reading specialists it could afford if central admin had simply been able to hold its budget flat during the declining enrollment over the past three years, instead of ballooning its budget by $2 million. Please, reexamine your budget priorities and make some cuts that hurt NPS bureaucracy in exchange for retaining and bolstering instructional resources in our classrooms. They need it. Thank you.
Toni Johnson.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Boone, Chair Noel Gabriel, and school board members. My name is Toni Johnson, and I reside at 1604 Basic Crescent in Portsmouth, Virginia. I am currently a teacher at PB Young Elementary School under the leadership of Dr. Duana White and a member of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. You know what? I stand firm tonight with much assurance that you, Dr. Boone, are leading us to greatness in this crippled, and I say that because of some of the poor-performing schools in this district, but resilient system. We are resilient. We can bounce back. I know we can. I say resilient because I believe we can and we will recover from this difficult condition. I appreciate you, Dr. Boone. The first to tackle the pay increase saga, that's what I call it, putting it in phases as not to exasperate the school system, implementing phases one, two, and three of the pay and compensation plan. You have indeed proven that you are support of teachers, administration, and all personnel that are a part of this district. Your budget supports teacher expenditures from $50 to $100. Now, that's a big deal to me because we have been, because, because we have been getting $50 for quite some time and buying supplies has been dipping in my household budget. Your budget also supports salary incentives, again, for hard-to-staff schools and will include teacher assistants, and that's, that's a, that's a big deal at my school, a big deal. That is why I appreciate and would greatly appreciate, Dr. Boone. While there are many reasons that may cause the accomplishments to outweigh dissension, accomplishing your goals, Dr. Boone, will give you the leverage you need to achieve the school's mission. Now, in closing, these acts are very impactful in maintaining great teachers in low-performing schools, and I can only imagine how much more you would accomplish in the future. You know what, you guys, I got to say this. Okay, so you have a disagreement. So you have issues with one another. Who don't? Who doesn't? Who doesn't have an issue? I say get it together, go back to the, to the roundtable and make amends with one another so that this district can be a great district again, the district that I once heard about before I came to this school. Thank you.
Nate Kinnison, followed by Thomas Calhoun.
Ms. Jackson, just before Mr. Kinnison speaks, Ms. Davis gave up her time for another individual that had to come, so do we know, was that individual signed up? Okay.
Oh, she was signed.
She was signed up, right. So, so we just want to make sure that we get her in there in the proper alignment for where she swapped out with the mother with the baby. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nate Kinnison. I'm a parent of five children headed through Norfolk Public Schools. I came tonight to talk about reading and math specialists, music and art physicians that should be included in the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. You know, a recent article in the pilot incorrectly labeled several schools as affluent schools. Considering the fact that 30% of our school-aged children in Norfolk do not actually attend Norfolk Public Schools, most of those from affluent communities, they go to private school. The main three incorrectly-assumed affluent schools, Larchmont, Gettysburg, and Taylor, all have disadvantaged rates of over a third of each building, and that's five times the rate of some of the most affluent schools in the rest of Hampton Roads. Contrary to popular belief, out of our nine top-performing schools, the majority of them are not predominantly white, and they are a majority economically disadvantaged at a rate of greater than 50% in those top nine high-performing schools. Those students need a full-time reading and math specialist to help design instruction, the position to use effectively for instructional planning, and ongoing professional development at the building levels. I am a teacher in an elementary school for 15 years in Virginia Beach. I know how reading specialists can work in a building, particularly one with a mid-to-high-range poverty rate. There are many students in all of these schools, including the ones that are being deemed affluent, that need the instructional support of the reading and math specialists, along with music and the art teachers. We look after each one of those students, and we treat each learner as an individual. Equity is an absolute and complete necessity, but we don't achieve it by pretending that we have actual affluent schools in Norfolk from which to strip resources. And I have to say that the numbers of demographics in NPS don't even come close to what should be considered affluence in any of our schools. I have to scrap this for just a moment to say that tonight, it seemed awful, a lot like a cheerleading session. I don't hear a whole lot of people talking about the raises that weren't given or the budget that really wasn't fully developed to ask finally for what we need. I hear a lot of people, you know, touting the things that I've heard Mr. Calhoun tout at every school board meeting, but I will say, I will say that the time for actual, like, forward movement on the school board is happening with the accountability plan that was just passed. I have to say, I'm glad to see you move forward with an accountability plan and targets for educational improvement. I'm also glad to see a return to student learning and achievement as a focus of the majority of the school board. The accountability plan clearly states a commitment to success for every child, and I'm glad to see members of the school board supporting building-level resources to support achievable goals and new targets. The accountability plan lays out a timeline by which we will push through full accreditation to Better and Beyond for all of our students. To me, it's a very clear path past a baseline of accreditation, and I encourage all of your complete support moving forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Thomas Calhoun. I'm brother in the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. Before I start cheerleading, let me say this. Nobody will worry about budget for years as it is today, okay? When the schools on a certain part of this city are being underfunded, as they are today and have been for years, and won't nobody worry about what the central administration budget was then, as they seem to be now, putting a lot of blame for years of things on one person, as we tend to do here while we've had about 10 superintendents in the last 25 years. Every time we get two new school board members, we get a new superintendent, okay? You won't worry about the budget then, and when you were running for school board to be up here with your sister-in-law, you won't worry then either. But let me say this. In 2016, with a lot of issues, first one being custodians, and Dr. Boone, you came in, we had a private group running custodian. It was a mess, and that's why the custodians are here to thank you for what you did. You came in, you took care of it, and things have been running smoothly in that department ever since you got here. The STEP, I believe when I retired, 17 years, I think I was on STEP 11. I don't remember another superintendent trying to get these steps straight till you got here. Not perfect, some people have some complaints, but I know a lot of people in here who are very happy about what you're doing, and it's the third program now, so thank you for that because no one else did it. And this budget process, I've sat there, it's like watching these work sessions where it's like children in a canister, "I want this, I want that." I've never seen anything like that. One board member said, "Well, I turned mine in last year." I thought it was all seven of y'all. I feel strongly, I want this and this. I've never seen this before. So thank you all, you board members, and you, Dr. Boone, for getting this budget together despite everything that's happening. The Norfolk Federation of Teachers are here to support you and, and trying to make sure we have excellent education for all, and let me emphasize that, for all. And if two cities in this state have a written equity policy, and we're one of them, now all we got to do is follow it. So I want to thank you for that, and the board members last year who put that in place, and that's what we came here for, whether it's called cheering or not. We're happy with the job you're doing, and we're going to stand with you. I promise you that.
Ms. Whitney Davis.
Evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. My name is Whitney Davis. I'm sure you all remember, I'm a Norfolk Public Schools' parent, a former kindergarten teacher. I currently teach at Larchmont United Methodist Preschool, and I volunteer at J Cox and the Impact Homework Club. I'm a member of More Recess for Virginia's Norfolk, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Increasing recess is an issue that needs discussion, and not just one between me and other parents. I would like to continue the discussion with you. I would like to continue the discussion with some of our Norfolk Public Schools administrators. I would like to stop talking about why recess is so incredibly important, though it absolutely is, and start talking about the impediments to its increase and practical ways to overcome them. I want to be a problem solver, not just a speaker up here talking at you month after month. I know there are roadblocks to change. We are asking for 2020 by 2020, which is adding a 20-minute recess period in the morning for a total of 40 minutes of recess daily for the 2019-2020 school year for elementary school. The 20-minute, I'm sorry, I know getting principals to change the master schedule to accommodate this extra 20 minutes is no small thing, but the 20-minute minimum we have right now is really a maximum, and it's limiting our children's education. There is no principal out there giving kids more than 20 minutes. I believe you have the power to change that by changing the minimum. I need your actions in addition to your words, and I need them before principals start creating their master schedules for the fall of 2019. I know what More Recess for Virginia wants, but a one-sided discussion just goes in circles, and we want to move forward. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes our citizen comments for tonight.
No, I'm sorry. We had one more, we had one more, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright.
I've had longer public hearings in my history. Randy Wright, former PTA president, city councilman. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board members. First, let me thank you for honoring my adopted sister, Dr. Patricia Turner, when last I was here. It was long overdue, but the board made it happen, and I profoundly thank you for that. Why am I here tonight? If I said, if I put it in one word, civility. The Virginian pilot headlines have been destructive. Gamesmanship at the expense of our children is unacceptable. Children's education should be first and foremost. Virginian pilot has certainly not put our children first. So we hit the pause button. Hello. For the first time, all seven school board members are directly elected, which took some 20,000 signatures and decades to accomplish that. Why? Because the public lost confidence in the appointed process, something the pilot supported. Perhaps there was probable cause, so let's examine the facts. Virginian pilot reported that the city of Portsmouth is 57% accredited. Norfolk is 51%. Apples to apples, is there any board member satisfied that Portsmouth is outdistancing Norfolk? I should hope not. Certainly not the public. That message was loud and clear on Election Day. So let's look at the hard stats and the facts of the cold, hard numbers. The DNA is in the test scores. Third grade math went from 67 down to 62, minus five. Does that sound like an improvement? Fourth grade went from 74 to 67. That's minus seven. Does that sound like an improvement? Well, it gets better because the sixth grade went from 77 down to 62. That's a 15-point drop. That's the DNA. The subgroups have dropped. African-American dropped by six points. White-Caucasian dropped three points. Reading was completely static, up one, down one, up four, down four. I know my friend over here studies numbers. These are not acceptable numbers, and you can't deny the DNA that's taking place. So you can't just sit there and act as if this has improved when there's no way that it's improved. It has not improved. The public knows better. Thank God we live in a democracy designed for the express purpose to ensure accountability, accreditation, academics, and achievement. Ladies and gentlemen, the task is daunting, but for the last three years, you have failed. In the business world, people would be dismissed with that type of a resume. Let's right the sinking ship, let's, before it sinks. The last three years are just not acceptable. It's past time to be transparent, and the true accreditation of our schools is imperative. Let's support the plan that's been approved, that sets accountable goals, that are designed to improve our schools' achievement and academic excellence for all schools. There is an old axiom, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Unfortunately, ours is broke, bent, and busted, as the song says. Challenge ourselves to do better. Our children deserve better. Our city deserves better. And in closing, I'm a graduate, I was a graduate of Norfolk Public Schools. A lot of, lots hear about other schools, Norview High School, okay. My son graduated from Norfolk Public Schools, and I'm looking forward to my grandson graduating from Norfolk Public Schools. But I gotta tell you, the DNA is where it's at, and we've got to get higher test scores. It is just not acceptable. Our kids are not passing. We gotta do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our citizen comments for tonight.
Moving on to item 5.08, approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda for March 20th.
Second. Ms. Martin, second.
Uh, no.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith.
Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to topic seven, discussion of other agenda decision items, the monthly financial report. Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. As Ms. Ingram comes forward, we have our monthly financial report and other statistical information that Ms. Ingram will share.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, school board members. While the report is being pulled up, and since you have it in your packet, I'd like to go ahead and do the reading of it. The revenues, I'm given the report for our eighth accounting period, which ends February 28th. The revenue received as of the end of February was $201.3 million, or 61.1% of the total budget, and that compares to 61.3% for the same time period last fiscal year and 65.5% in fiscal year 2017. On the expenditure side, encumbrances and expenses and encumbrances total $192.8 million, or 58.8% of the budget, and that compared to 56.9% for the same time period in fiscal year 2018 and 58.8% in fiscal year 27. During the month of February, we had one budget transfer that was greater than $50,000, and that is included in your packet. And then after that sheet was, again, is another high-level review of the financials and revenue and expenditures by categories and with an explanation of year-to-year variances.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the financial report as presented?
I move to approve the financial report as presented.
Second?
Second, me.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan? Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Now on to the budget adoption, which we have discussed for the, well, the whole year, but really much so for the past two months. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Prior to the business meeting, we had a work session where we examined additional positions for the budget. We went back and worked through the budget, which would add four reading and/or math specialists, one ESL teacher, one art teacher, one music teacher. All of that information as to how we reached that in the budget was presented during the workshop. And so what is before you now is a recommendation that the school board adopt the budgets for this year.
Mr. Jackson, can you pull that one up, the?
The budget, our point?
The budget, that piece, so the public can see. The next item on the adoption of the budget. Thank you. Yeah, that's the one. And Ms. Ingram, again, will share with us what the, you can go to the data page. Thank you. Two more pages. Freezing on it. Slide three. Slide three is frozen. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Yes. Like Dr. Boone said, we discussed at the work session to add those additional positions. But the bottom line did not change. We just adjusted within. So it is recommended that the school board adopts the following budgets for the fiscal year 2019-2020 year. Our operating budget is $333,161,810. Our school nutrition budget of $20,000. Our grants, million, I'm sorry, grants and special funds budget of $40 million. Our capital improvement projects fund, we have two capital improvement projects from the city appropriation. Deferred maintenance is $3 million. School bus replacement is $1 million. For a total, all funds, which will become now the school board proposed budget once adopted, of $40,161,810. So that is our rec, excuse me, our recommendation to approve all funds and following budgets.
Okay.
Your motion. And it will be sent to the city by April 1st, according to statutory requirements.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boone and Ms. Ingram. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the budget items, including the summary of all funds, as Ms. Ingram has detailed, for the 2019-2020 budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
There are second?
Second.
Mr. Jordan, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm pleased that we were able to pull together and move forward with the recommendation for the, for the board's budget. I'd just like to again note that I think it's important that we acknowledge on the operating side of the budget that there are significant deficits that we need to address moving forward, and why I think we've done a good job of balancing the budget. I'd just like to again recommend that we, at least in our letter to the council, acknowledge our support for the classroom, but also acknowledge that we continue to have needs operationally to support the teaching earning in the classroom.
And maintenance, too. You had mentioned.
I'm including that in there.
Other questions or discussion on the budget?
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
I would encourage everyone to watch the work session earlier, because I think we did a good job of describing the adjustments and what the recommendations came forward from the superintendent and the board. This one is a little dry. The other one was a lot more engaged, and I think it would be helpful for those to also watch that to understand the adjustments that we made together as a team. I vote aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye, and I do have some comments prepared, but I would like to yield, well, not yield, but I would like to ask my colleagues if they have comments on the budget that they would like to share, being that we do have a 7-0 vote on this budget.
Versus matters of the board versus doing it later?
Oh, this is pertaining to the budget. I'd like to start by commending Dr. Boone and her staff on the work that they have done this year and in years prior on aligning community, staff, and student goals with the budget requests and recommendations. We know that there is so much more that they would like to include. The work that has been done these past two years regarding the salaries and step increases, many of which we heard tonight from our public speakers, shows commitment from the board, the superintendent, and the city, because a lot of it was funded with local dollars, not by the state, to provide better wages for our teachers, support staff, and that is 80% of our budget. These past two months of budget discussion allowed for dialogue on many topics. Technician specialist, I'm sorry, attendance technicians, reading specialists, art, music, PE, guidance counselors. It is our duty as a board to ask the questions, to request the items, to propose and to debate the requests with the superintendent and ultimately settle on a plan that has quality input and aligns with the board goals and priorities. I would encourage everyone to read the recent op-ed by Dr. Jim Roberts on public education funding in the Virginian pilot. Advocating at every level, as Ms. Basine had stated earlier, local, state, and national, is the only way that we will get to pre-2009 funding and assessment of the true cost of education. I support this budget as a positive step, aligning funds that directly impact students. I sincerely thank my colleagues on this budget. It is going to go a long way for teacher compensation, safety and transportation, special education, music and art, and most importantly, student achievement. I look forward to working with each and every one of you on our goals moving forward. Thank you very much.
Can I say something? Not as organized and prepared as yours, but I just want to say, as, you know, a first-year board member, the discussion has been very enriching, and I appreciate everyone's perspectives here that got us to this vote today. And I really do want to truly thank Dr. Boone and the district staff for making this relatively painless. I mean, it really was. I really did not know what to expect, and, you know, you just hear horror stories about going through budget processes, especially one of, you know, the significant size and importance, and every item in our budget is crucially important. And so when we're trying to, you know, decipher, you know, one over the other and what, you know, and priorities, I mean, they're all a priority. And I just want to say that this was a wonderful process, Dr. Boone, today. I was very impressed with you and how you handled our recommendations and made things work. So thank you. I'm really proud of us, actually.
Item 7.03, the academic calendar. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. If she hadn't left us for the.
Nope, she's right there.
Okay, yes. Wake up, Rock.
I didn't mean for this to be at 10 o'clock at night, but.
And early March Madness games, too. Last, during the last work session, we did, not today, present to the board a draft of what the proposed calendar was looking like, so that you could have a chance. And so Ms. Rock is gonna share some other information with it, and then I'll talk about our recommendation to approve the calendar.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good evening.
Good evening. It is evening.
I'd like to begin by thanking the calendar committee, which is a cross-representation of many departments across the division, as well as the two associations that assisted with developing this and putting it together. I'd also like to thank the communications department for doing the pretty PowerPoint, and I do logistics. They do pretty. So I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review the documents that you have, so I need not go through them step by step, but understand that we also work collaboratively with Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, and Portsmouth when we're developing our calendar, so that we can make sure that we're all in alignment. And that helps with teachers, employees that work outside of our city or live outside of our city and come to work so that we all kind of stay on the same page. Now, the other side of the water, they're a different beast, so they do things a little bit differently. But over on this side of the water, we keep things as collaborative as we can. So keeping that in mind, as we go along, you'll see on the next slide that we had 739 total responses to the survey, and the survey was out for two weeks. I also want to thank communications because they did a great job with sending out some parent links and posting it on the webpage so that people had the opportunity. Principals also did some PR work for us, too, as well, so I appreciate that. 656 of those 739 felt that the calendar looked good. This is a pretty good calendar. This is a pretty good one. Eighty-five opposed. There were 426 comments that I read, every single one of them. And, you know, some of the comments that were made had nothing to do with the calendar, as usual. But the ones that, questions that were made that come up on the next slide. Do we have built-in makeup days? Yes, we do, and we base that on the 990 Carnegie hours, so we're well over those hours. So we do have bank days in there as well as makeup days. Teachers would like more workdays. Well, there are four built in there, and two of which are requested by the city, because the city would like us to have as least population in the buildings during voting and have specially requested for the presidential primary for next year. So we have given the students, that day is a non-instructional day, and the teachers a virtual day, which means their responsibilities will be on doing their grading and getting schoolwork done at home. So they're not creating problems with parking and population within the buildings. Always make spring break after Easter. I wish I could, but as you had read, we have a formula that we follow, and it is based on April 15th. So it would always be nice to have it after, but it's not part of our principles that we follow with the other school divisions. Start school in August. Okay, we can cross that one off the list. Looks pretty good for 2021. We'll work on that. Bring back parent-teacher conference day. There's open availability within the buildings. A lot of schools have set days that they do it on. Some do it by appointment only. So there is open availability for that, and I encourage if parents want to make an appointment to meet with the child, teachers, that they would just go ahead and contact the school and set that up. They're pretty open to helping with that. Teachers would prefer not to have to return after June 15th. We fortunately align with Virginia Beach and Portsmouth. The 15th is their last day of school as well. But the students' last day will be the 12th, so we'll work on that one. Sample survey comments go on to the teachers' associations, and as you heard earlier about the Red for Ed Rally Day and requesting to flip-flop those two days. Well, we originally had the teacher workday first, and then the professional development day. And then the teachers were stating that they would rather have the professional development day first, so they could incorporate it into their lessons. So we put the teacher workday second. So we're standing with that. It was taken into consideration. And we also received lots of kudos from people. Looks great. I love doing business with Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you for the two-week holiday. We gave them two weeks. And it was very well planned out, and PS. So we got some great kudos for that. Moving on, Dennis Fuddy put together a good matrix for you so that you could see how we really align with the rest of the school divisions, and we're doing pretty good as a South Side Division, staying together with that. Inclement weather, there's your days that you can see, and really, it's at the discretion of the superintendent how these are used. Once again, it's based on the 990 Carnegie hours that we. Once again, it's based on the nine hundred and ninety Carnegie hours that we go by. Graduations, we had some people requesting the graduation information, and once we post the schedule, the calendar, all this information is part of that. You receive that as an additional posting on the board docs, but this is for this year. We will go to, I mean, for next year, thank you, Dr. Boone, we will go to a four and a seven on the first day, and on the second day, a one-four and a seven, and it rotates every year. So, everybody has an opportunity within a five-year span to get a primetime slot. Okay? Next steps. The next steps will be for curriculum and instruction, to review the calendar, once you've approved it, and they will plug in the quarterly dates, so we know when the quarters will end, but we don't do that housework stuff until after the calendar has been accepted. Dr. Boone?
I would like to say thank you to Ms. Rock for chairing our calendar committee and the work, and also working with our regional group. It's my recommendation that the school board approve, adopt the calendar as presented for school year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty academic calendar.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, please call the roll.
Ms. Bassin?
Before I vote, the one piece of information that I, it's more of a comment than a question is, this year, I felt that there were, there was a lot of confusion around the makeup days and whether they were going to happen or not happen, and so just going forward, you know, the communication to families about whether those makeup days would be used for, you know, the hurricane, those number of days that we had off for inclement weather. But I, too, love that we're having a two-week winter break, and I vote aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Just one thing to Ms. Bassin's comment about the makeup days. The district leadership team knows, I'm not going to say that four-letter word, because we aren't at March thirty-first yet.
I know.
That was the holdout in terms of having to make up. We're at the twentieth. As I look at the long-range forecast, it's looking favorable. See, I'm using all of this nice language. It's looking favorable, and then we will be in a good place not to have to do additional days. We can use, when you, one of the things I encourage all employees and families to do, look on the second page of the calendar. Backside, if you have a two-sided printed one, the makeup day information is there, and we do work very hard to communicate it, but that also includes bank days, and so we don't make an announcement when we don't have to make up the day. And so, because the way in which the weather has cooperated this winter, it does not appear that we're going to have to do any additional makeup days.
Thank you.
Okay, on to matters of the board.
Ms. Campson?
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. I just want to, I know it's late, I just want to take a quick few minutes to share with the board and the staff about a new partnership between Norfolk Public Schools and the Economic Development Authority of Norfolk. This effort led by our superintendent, Dr. Boone, has a goal of, down the road, as we move along, creating a school-to-work pathway as we focus on career awareness and work readiness. It's, the movement started last summer, when Dr. Boone and Dr. Birdsong met with the leadership of the Economic Development Authority and started the initial planning. At that time, Dr. Boone suggested that they hold a summit, and as this has gone on, and I was, for the board, asked to join, that has started planning. Our own, Dr. Legrand, and Joel Rubin, who is a member of the steering committee, this is a new thing, this is just getting going, we don't have advisory boards or anything yet, but we have a steering committee that Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Legrand are on, serving as representatives of Dr. Boone, and I'm on serving as a representative of the board as we kind of, it's kind of a startup at this time. I don't want to get into it a lot, but I would like to thank Dr. Boone for her leadership in this. We met again briefly today to discuss, you know, some concerns that she has as we move forward, to make sure that we, you know, stay in line with what the school district needs to do, but I think it has wonderful possibilities. The leadership that has come from the business world and come to the meetings, we've had CEOs and city leaders and just quite a variety of people that are very interested. Norfolk, of course, already has a lot of CTE programs within our schools, a lot of wonderful programs that we have at the vocational center, but this is almost a vision of something that will grow and become a bigger and bigger thing for so many of our children, so that when they walk out the door, they'll walk into a job. I'm going to take just one more minute, if I could have it, because I'd like to ask Dr. Legrand to just very quickly let us know about this wonderful summit that's coming up in June, that we hope some of our teachers and principals will be able to attend. Didn't mean to catch you on this pod.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to quickly echo what Ms. Campson has said. The Expectation Summit is slated to take place on June twenty-sixth of this year at the Ted Costak Convocation Center. We're still working on logistics and ensuring that things are moving in the right direction. As Ms. Campson indicated, we are working closely with local businesses, we're working closely with school board representatives and principals. We will be soon bringing in principals and other leadership to make sure that everybody is on the same page, because just as the school system has expectations for the greater business community, to make sure that graduates are able to be employed, we also want to make sure that we understand the expectations on the other side. So, making sure that the twenty-one workplace readiness skills are imparted upon our students, and making sure that our students are fully aware of opportunities that exist beyond Norfolk Public Schools. So, we're very excited about this. As Ms. Campson mentioned, Dr. Boone, it was her brainchild. We have been very eagerly working on this. As you all know, partnerships and volunteer opportunities have come under the auspices of the communications department since the dissolution of the foundation, so we're working very hard with limited staff, but definitely working to fulfill the obligations of the time commitment and looking forward. I know Dr. Gabriel and the rest of the board members are eagerly awaiting this, but more will be coming. You'll probably get a brochure or flyer, some information, very soon. We're having a meeting tomorrow here at the central administration building in the superintendent's conference room, and we're really excited. Please mark your calendars. Right now, it's slated for maybe eight to three time for that day, but we're still working on those logistics.
For the summit, yeah.
Yeah, so we're hoping that you keep, stay tuned for that, and we will keep you informed, and we're looking forward to coming back with a more robust presentation about what's expected at the summit, but we're hoping this will work out very soon.
Thank you, Dr. Legrand. It is, this is really new. It's really kicked off, of course, as I said, Dr. Boone is totally responsible for getting it all started last summer, but it's really kicked off in January. That's how new it is to really, to get things going, following the leadership and the pathway that Dr. Boone and Dr. Birdsong worked out last summer when they first met with the EDA. And I would like to announce that tomorrow, Dr. Birdsong will be joining the representative from the EDA and taking leadership of the movement, and so she agreed with that. She's not looking like she's jumping up and down, but she, because we need to have a representative on the school board that will sit there in Dr. Boone's place. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you, board members. If any of you, oh, they can't drop by, I'm sorry. Can't have the extra people there, because, all right, never mind. I was going to suggest, anyone on the staff would like to drop by? We will be in the...
If I could, Ms. Campson, this is a planned meeting, so let's keep it to the team.
Okay. Thank you, sorry. Thank you. She's still giving me directions.
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, well, it's late and I'm tired, so I'll keep it short. What a great night it has been, starting with the young man that sang our national anthem, followed by the amazing drum circle at Granby Elementary. I saw their principal, Ms. Vee, here tonight, and I wanted to say thank you for allowing this to happen. In addition, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Kathy Swain, their music teacher. Ms. Swain helped my foundation inside of music. She was my first piano instructor at the Summer Enrichment Program, now called Camp Einstein. Shows you how long ago that was. This woman solely has proven to me the power of music. I lead in the saying, students, that the school year is not quite over yet, but now is the time to start thinking about what you're going to do over the summer. NPS has some great programs for all levels. In addition, seniors, we graduate in eighty-two days, but who's counting? So, now is the time to figure out what the plan is for next year and what the future is. If you don't know, we have some great counselors inside of our schools. We have some great teachers that can help you out, and even ask your peers, what are you doing next year? Because they can help you out with some more information. Summer jobs is a great thing if you plan on going to college, because you need to pay for college, so get a summer job. Take all of the opportunities that the city's giving. The City of Norfolk has a program called the Norfolk Emergent Leaders that have been inside of our schools for the past few years, and it provides a lot, a lot, a lot of opportunities for our students, which I think is a great, great asset to our community. In addition, I would just want to say I'm proud of all of our students. Know that Shaffer and I will back you forever. The school board will back you forever. We love you and we thank you for being a beacon of light in our community. Thanks.
Well, well said, Jalen.
I'm scared to go after Jalen. Anybody else want, anybody else want to go?
I'll let you go.
I'll, I'll, I'll take the hit. First of all, I was at VSBA Board of Directors meeting last Friday, and State Superintendent Lane was there, and he was sharing his work and the work of the State Board around Virginia is for learning, learners concept, and some work that the State Board is doing around equity and accountability. And I know they had a meeting today. I would encourage us to take a look at that work. I think it aligns very much with the work that Norfolk Public Schools has been leading around equity and accountability, and there's some important synergies there around growth and some data analysis that they've done, not only, you know, around the state, some of the things that, that we talk about here in Norfolk, and I know some of the speakers talked about apples-to-apples comparisons. There are challenges and opportunities around the state, dealing with, you know, lots of indicators, and the State Board is going in a positive direction that I think aligns with what we've advocated as part of our legislative priorities over the last few years. So, I think if we would take a look at that, and if there's an opportunity for us to get a presentation on that work, I would encourage us to do that. Secondly, we have Mr. Michael Lee, who is the chair of the Economic Development Authority Board in the audience, and it's nice to hear about the summit work, but also know that Mr. Lee and Mr. Coleman and many of his colleagues have been out advocating for strengthening the partnership between the Economic Development Authority and the business community and Norfolk Public Schools for some time, and we are thankful for their advocacy and their work. They've hosted school board members at their meetings in the past. Thank Dr. Boone for getting engaged and recommending this opportunity. I'd like to hear more about it, because I like to make sure that along with our other work with advisory committees and partnerships, that we are being as inclusive as possible. The Black Brand, the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, which I acknowledge I'm a new member, has been doing some excellent work with Booker T. Washington High School and some others, and I think there's a lot to learn from some of the ongoing work that the Hampton Roads Black Chamber of Commerce in particular has underway in partnerships with our schools, that I know that the administration, working with Dr. Boone and Dr. Legrand and others, have helped to advance. So, there's some work there that we can learn from that, as well as the ongoing collaboration that we hear often about the CTE advisory committee that we have there. So, I hope we will work together collectively to leverage all the assets and best practices that we have out there, so that this summit can be, you know, the start of something that is magnificent for our students. And I guess the last comment I'll just make in terms of this conversation around growth and standards, you know, I've always been a little lukewarm around the whole school accountability piece. You all know I have been chairing a task force with VSBA. We just changed the name to VSBA Task Force on Students in Schools in Challenging Environments, because too often, the school A to F and all these other standards have been used as a punishment, rather than being used as a diagnostic, as they were intended to make sure that all of our children were being successful, no matter where they attended school. And I just like to encourage us to make sure that in our own language, that we are rewarding growth and work. Use an example with some parent I think I was talking to one day, and you can have, you know, hypothetically, a child that comes in and pretests at a ten, I'm making this up, pretests at a ten on a scale to a hundred, and that child grows by fifty points in a year, but still falls below some benchmarks that we may look at. That ten-to-fifty-point growth is as important to that child and to the schools and the teachers and the others that work with that child as much as a child that comes in at a ninety and ends up at a hundred. And so, being able to recognize and applaud and encourage that growth and that effort, I think is important and has a significant impact for the students' morale and the morale of all the support folks, the teachers in the classroom and others, to help to see that growth. And I know I remain committed to doing all that I can to support that effort and the march forward that we've been on and continue to be on, and we'll deal with whatever brutal facts we have to deal with along the way. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Other comments? I'd just like to, once again, congratulate our students, our teachers, and our PTA members on a fabulous production last night at the PTA Reflections Contest. Great works of art. We have several students that are moving on to the regional level, and we did talk about, you know, maybe one of them will make it to the national level, but it's, it was very, very lovely to see all the parents and students in their artwork, dance performances, musical performances there. So, kudos to our Norfolk Council of PTA and to the PTA leaders in our individual schools. I'd also like to just say thank you again to our administrators, principals that are here tonight, way past your time on the clock, but we know that you work all the time for the kids, so we appreciate that. Just a note going forward that our next formal meeting, you know, normally we have our meetings on the third Wednesday of the month, but in April, we will be on spring break, and so we've adjusted that meeting to be the following week, so April the twenty-fourth. Okay, same time, but on April the twenty-fourth. Want to give you all plenty of heads up on that. And that's it. So, I thank you all very much.
There's going to be a motion to go in the second.
Sorry, thank you very much. Mr. Cloud, we were unable to finish...
Not over yet.
Not over for us. So, we need to go back into closed session to finish up some last-minute details from previous. Mr. Cloud, would you please, well, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I'll read it, then you can do the vote.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
There is a second? There is a first, motion and a second?
It's been moved and properly seconded by the members of the school board to go into a closed session for the purposes set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for a discussion of... Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for a discussion of consideration of employee performance, et cetera pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is for further discussion by the school board of the performance feedback to be given to the superintendent. And subsection B of the motion, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section, and the subjects of this section of the motion are advice of counsel as needed related to the personnel action identified in subsection A of the motion, and for an updating by counsel of the board on the hacking of the Twitter account and the dissolution of the Norfolk Education Foundation.
Ms. Jackson, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Just want to declare again, any, that I feel I'm comfortable and able to act accordingly with the discussion for the closed session, and if not, I will remove myself from the discussion.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. This concludes this session of the meeting.